Justice McBride.
Here.
Kristi Marquez.
Here.
Cecilia Dius Loken.
Present.
Vice President McAvoy.
Present.
President Lawson.
I'm here. So we are on item 4.2, recorded up from closed session from September 23rd, 2020. The board received information and no action was taken. So welcome to the September 23rd board meeting for the Redwood City School District. I've posted a couple of links in the chat for both the agenda and the speakers cards. And I'll post those again as more attendees roll in. If you'd like to speak to the board, please fill out the Google Doc and make sure you include your name so that we know who to unmute when the time comes. If the item you wish to address is not on the agenda, you'll be called on during oral communication. And if it is, if the item you are addressing is on the agenda, you'll be called on when that item is being addressed. And so tonight I have a number of speakers cards regarding a combination of distance learning waiver, returning to school. All of those will be called on during the discussion 14.1 on COVID-19. Let's see. And then because we are meeting via teleconference, all votes are going to be by roll call. So item 6.1 are the changes to the agenda. Alyssa?
Yeah, I was wondering, I had a couple of changes. First of all, I was wondering if we wanted to move 12.1 up higher up on the agenda. That's the recognition of our longevity staff. Sort of at a courtesy, because some of them might be staying for the whole meeting, but some might not be. I don't know how long an agenda item that is, but that was one idea that we might want to discuss if there's a place to move it up. And then my other item would be, could we move the 16.1 to 16.4? Action items to consent. Those have to do with some personnel and then also the revision to the distant learning policy.
So I guess let's regarding the 16.1 and 16.4, is everybody okay moving those to consent?
Could we leave 16.4 to have a discussion, please?
Okay, so 16.1 to consent. And then, so as far as moving 12.1, the recognition. And I don't know, Dr. Baker, do you want to put it before the public hearings? Or do we want to leave it after those? You're on mute.
Yeah, just go ahead and put it before the public hearing.
Okay. And assuming everybody's okay with that?
Everyone's up fine with that, yeah. So could you repeat the consent items again, please, that were the action items that were moved to consent?
So the only action item going to consent is 16.1 approval.
No, 16.1, two, and three.
Oh, I missed that, sorry.
Was my recommendation. The board's okay with it. And then Dennis recommended to keep 16.4, which is fine. Yeah.
Thank you for clarifying that. Are there any other changes? So if not, do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
I'll second it.
That was Maria and Alyssa. And can we have a roll call vote, please?
Ms. McBride.
Hi.
Kristi Marquez.
Hi.
Cecilia Dius Loken.
Hi.
Vice President McAvoy.
Hi.
President Lawson.
Hi. Okay, thank you. That now brings us to item eight, oral communication. And all the cards I have are on specific agenda items at this point. So we can move on to 12.1, the recognition of staff who've reached longevity milestones. This is always a real fun one when it's in person.
Yes. So we have a special treat tonight. I wanted to thank Erin Kekos in Human Resources and Jorge Quintana, our Director of Communication, that really created a special video. And of course, all of the participants. We, this is such a great occasion to recognize our employees. Usually we like to do this earlier in this year, but of course, we've been distracted with other things and it pushed our deadline out a little bit. But that being said, traditionally, board members go out to staff meetings and present employee recognition certificates and pins to employees that have reached milestones. Five years, 10 years, 15, 20, 25, 30, 35, and 40 in our district. And so it's quite remarkable to see staff grow and learn and be a part of our district for so many years. So we really wanted to celebrate that moment tonight. All participants that are receiving these recognitions were invited to tonight's board meeting. So I'm thrilled that they may be in the audience. But Erin Kekos, who is new in Human Resources, but not new to our district, of course, really spent quality time thinking through how this could look different for this year. And so I really appreciate the time and energy she put into this presentation. And Jorge Quintana just really put the final touches for sure on this video. So we will be seeing a 12-minute video. It's heartfelt. There are comments in there. So I appreciate the time as we go through it. I'm going to introduce Erin Kekos. So Kyle, if you could put her up as a panelist, that would be wonderful. Oh, there she is. And thank you. And she will speak a few words and then we'll continue forth.
Good evening. I'm super excited to be here tonight to introduce this item and to recognize these employees. We have over 100 employees being recognized for their dedication to the Redwood City School District this evening. They range in years of service from five years to 40 years. And so this video really speaks to their dedication to our community, to our students. And I really just want to extend on behalf of of Human Resources and the district, a heartfelt thank you to these employees tonight. So Kyle, if you wouldn't mind playing the video for us? So while we're waiting for that, I will explain the process that we used. These employees were notified a few weeks ago of their longevity milestone and asked to submit a selfie that we can include so we can attach a name and a face to this honor this evening. We've also asked one speaker from each category. Here we go.
So I'm not hearing any audio on this.
Thrive and learn. I want to thank you for recognizing my work and my years with our district. And now I'd Hello, my name is Olivia Su and I've been with RCSD for five years now. I chose to stay at RCSD because right away I felt the warmth of this wonderful community. And it was very apparent that everyone went above and beyond to serve our students. And there was just this strong willingness to help each other, to create a community for our students to thrive and learn. I want to thank you for recognizing my work and my years with our district. And now I'd like to introduce you to the other professionals who have also devoted five years to our RCSD students.
Hi, my name is Phoebe McTapers. I've been a nurse in the Redwood City School District for 10 years. I love being a nurse in the Redwood City School District because like teachers, I have the opportunity to make a positive impact on our students' lives every day as a school nurse. I also appreciate being part of a community that fosters good health and educational success. I love the people that I work with. We have an amazing team here in the Redwood City School District. Thank you for recognizing my work. Now I would like to introduce to you the other professionals who have devoted 10 years to Redwood City School District students.
Hello, my name is Liz Lawrence. And I have taught in Redwood City School District for 15 years. I am proud to say that our district offers a program for deaf and hard-of-hearing students. While other districts may not, this is why I have chosen to stay. Thank you for honoring my work. Now I would like to introduce you to other professionals who also have devoted 15 years to Redwood City School District students.
20 years has been a long time. And I can't speak for the other staff that's worked for 20 years. But I will say the biggest thing I've gone out of these 20 years were my connections. Connections to staff, to families, and especially the kids. Doesn't matter where I was, what school, kids were still our kids. I think the biggest reward I've ever had is seeing students come back later on saying, thank you. And that's why I choose Redwood City. So to those other 20-year veterans, let's rock on. To those other students that we're going to have next few years, let's do our best. Thank you very much.
Hello, hola. My name is Irma Figueroa. And I have been with the RCSD School District as a teacher for the last 25 years. I have chosen to stay at Redwood City School District because I actually feel that they chose me. Years ago, as a student teacher, they partnered with my graduate school and allowed me the opportunity to come and be trained to be a teacher. So I'm grateful to them for having that partnership at that time. I also felt at the end of that year, I found a place where I connected, you know, with the community where I am at currently at Kennedy. And I've served my 25 years there. And I felt that the diversity and the diversity of students and teachers and staff was just the place where I wanted to be. And so I stayed there and the rest is history. So I would like to thank you for recognizing my work to the community. It's been long. I thank you and I appreciate you for taking the time to do this. And at this time, I would like to also introduce to you the other professionals who have devoted 25 years or more to the Redwood City students and the district.
Hello, my name is Ruth Snyder. And I have been with the Redwood City School District since 1989. That's over 30 years. I have stayed this long with Redwood City because of the dynamic and talented coworkers that I've had a chance to work with. And I also really appreciate the commitment the district has to supporting teachers with staff development. Thank you for honoring my years of service. Now I'd like to introduce you to some other colleagues who've worked and devoted more than 30 years of their life to the children in this district.
Who didn't need to all of you. My name is Sandra Calderon. I have been with the Redwood City School District for 35 years. I chose to stay at the Redwood City School District because I love what I do, working with children. I enjoy the daily interactions with the students, their families, and the staff in our district. Thank you for recognizing my work. Now I would like to introduce you to the other professional who have devoted 35 years to Redwood City School District students.
Thank you to all of our teachers that were recognized. The certificates and pins that they typically would receive at the staff meeting in person are all packed in envelopes and in the mail and will be sent out tomorrow.
That was a really great video. Thank you so much for sharing that with us. We do have one speaker card on this, but I don't know if the board or Dr. Baker would like to say anything first? Or should we call on our public speaker?
Call on the, call on the speaker and then maybe we can say something.
Okay. So we have Maria Stockton. And I will share my account. Oh, I cannot share my countdown timer. So I will set a timer for three minutes on my phone.
Okay, can you hear me?
Hi, Maria, go ahead.
Hi, I would like to give my, oh, excuse me. I would like to personally congratulate and thank all those, oh, I'm sorry. Let me begin again. I would like
Go ahead.
I would like to personally thank and congratulate all those honored tonight. It has been my honor and pleasure of being the president of CSEA Redwood City 5, the representative for the classified unit of such a dedicated and wonderful group of people. Instead of jumping ship in difficult times such as now, they have held on tight to protect and provide the needed support services that keep this district up and running. Thank you to each of you, as well as all the teachers, administrators, and others honored tonight. Truly, you are appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you, Maria. I'll open it up to the board.
I, is that okay?
Yeah, go ahead.
So I just want to say thank you very much. Erin, that was such a beautiful video. I'm so glad you took the time to put that together. And what a great way to start our meeting tonight. I know everybody has gone through so much the last six months. And we've really all tried to work together and support each other. And I know it's really, really hard. So it's so uplifting to see these amazing employees we were able to recognize tonight. And what a diverse group, you know, all the different positions that we have in the district and different people. And it was just so beautiful and really represented the amazing power of the Redwood City School District. So thank you very, very much. I really appreciate it. And I appreciate all the staff who are on the meeting tonight. I know we have quite a few of you. And just thank you for all you do every single day for our kids and our families and for each other. Thank you.
So this is Dennis. I would like to first say thank you to Jorge and Erin. That was really awesome. It doesn't replace the in-person, but it was great. And I'd really like to thank all the teachers and staff for all you do, specifically the ones on here for your longevity, but every teacher and staff for the amazing things you do. And I'm kind of blown away because I see pictures and names there that they act like they're 10-year employees with their energy enthusiasm and they're like 25, 30 years. So it's very, very cool. So again, congratulations to everybody that was on the video tonight.
And Janet? Go ahead, Cecilia.
You go first and then Maria.
Me first. So again, thank you to everyone. It is wonderful to see that video. I do appreciate everything from the bottom of my heart. And like one of the teachers at Kennedy, Irma said she was here because they chose her. But I also think everyone that stayed here for this long is because there is something really good about Redwood City that you guys were actually liking. So I do really appreciate that you do take the time to invest so many years in the Redwood City School District and look out for our students and our community. So I really
And I would just follow up with all of that to thank everybody. I really want to thank Jorge and Erin for the video because it gave not only us the opportunity to see those wonderful individuals that come to work and do make such a big difference in the lives of our students, our families, and our community. You know, many of the times we just see a list of people, but we don't get to hear from them. And like, you know, it's just so nice to hear from them, to see them, and to really appreciate them as individuals. I've seen many of them and recognized them from when my children were in school. And like Sandra, I've known Sandra since, gosh, I think when John Baker was at Hoover way back then. And she's moved around the district, as Mr. Ho said. And the thing that, you know, really touches me is that each and every one of them does their best to help our students succeed. And when the students come back and say, thank you, that really is special. So again, thank you to everybody and congratulations. And thank you for staying with Redwood City School District.
So I do want to also say thank you to Jorge and Erin for putting that together. As I said at the beginning, this is always a really special celebration when it's in person. And I was wondering how you go about doing that. And I think you guys did a fantastic job. I want to thank everybody who has been here from five years and, you know, the 10 years, 15 years. Even at five years, you've been through a lot of ups and downs with us here in the district. Really good times and some really hard times. And we really appreciate you sticking through it with us and partnering with us. And I do want to make one note. I know Ms. Beatrice was in the 35-plus group, but I just want to point out, Ms. Beatrice is celebrating 40 years in our district. And I think that's a huge milestone. And interestingly, just this morning, I was having a conversation with my third grader. Was not even talking about the school district or anything. And he just happened to bring up that Ms. Beatrice is his favorite person to speak to when he's on campus at school because she has so much wisdom. And she takes time to sit and listen and have real conversations with him. And I just thought that was really special. And then seeing that it was her 40-year celebration is really cool. So thank you, everyone. Dr. Baker?
Yes, a big thank you to both Erin and Jorge. I didn't know how you were going to pull this off. And it turned out to be something really spectacular. And thank you to all the teachers and staff who continue working with the Redwood City School District and putting your efforts forward, especially during these times that we never thought we would be in. And then it was really amazing to see that Liz Lawrence had this time where she could be acknowledged because she works with her special needs kids, especially those that are needing some additional assistance. So I want to thank everyone again for everything that you do and keep up the great work.
So that was great. Thank you for that. We are moving on to our public hearings now. So we will open public hearing for the learning continuity and attendance for 2020, 21.
Do you want me to start, John? Okay, okay. Well, good evening, board members, and good evening, Dr. Baker. Good evening to the, everybody who's listening. And I also want to start off by saying congratulations to all the staff members for their longevity. It's fantastic. And we're so proud of all of the work that you do. I'm going to go ahead and share my screen. Oops, I host is disabled. Oops, I host this disabled screen sharing.
Kyle is going to have to give you permission.
Yeah, can you give me permission to share? Thanks.
Try that now.
Got it. Thank you, Kyle. So we are going to talk tonight about the learning continuity and attendance plan. This is the public hearing and we're going to be presenting an overview of the information. The entire plan is attached to the agenda. If anybody wants to read that, I welcome you and invite you to do that. There has been some information in prior board meetings about this plan coming forward. So it's not a complete surprise that some of the contents may be new to you. And so I wanted to spend just a little bit giving you an overview. So the learning continuity plan, oops, replaces the LCAP. Actually, let me go back, advancing a little too fast here. Senate Bill 98, which was passed over the summer, established a number of items. Among them, the minimum number of minutes, the requirement for attendance and engagement tracking, and also for this learning continuity plan, which is really intended to bring together the stakeholders, all of us educators, parents, students, and community members, while kind of streamlining all of the different plans that are in place in order to really prepare a plan for this one very special year that we're living through right now. I know I can't advance. There we go. So those of you who have been involved over these past many years with the LCAP know that the LCAP is a process that takes place for a three-year period of time. And during those three years, goals are written, metrics are established to ascertain progress towards those goals, actions and services are aligned with those goals along with funding. So the three-year LCAP, this was to have been a new year for that, for the three years, and it was called off last spring due to what was happening with the virus and the pandemic. And there was just a short little update that was due at the end of last year. So the the legislature decided to establish a one-year plan for this one year, giving us time to prepare for another three-year plan, which will take place starting in June. We'll be bringing it to the board for the following three years. So this is a one-year plan. That's not to be confused with the LCAP, although it has the same letters. We call it the LCP, the Learning Continuity Plan. And this plan that the template that was provided to us over the summer is due to be finalized by this public hearing and the final approval process next week because it's due to the County Office of Education, September 30. So it was a very short turnaround time. And these are the basic components of the plan. And again, I have not written out all of the details of these components because they are in the attachment to this document. But these are the different areas that we needed to address and write to. And so these are the areas of concern, I think, based on what happened across the state last spring that we needed to fully address to ensure that this year was going to be a different year for the education of our students. So there was a lot, there's a lot of focus on the continuity of learning, making sure that there is not an interruption of learning, no matter what happens with the pandemic this year. So there needs to be a description of in-person offerings, which we had planned to do last July. We had talked about the hybrid model. So we are talking about the hybrid model in this. And now depending again on how we move forward, we can update this with whatever those changes are. And then there's a, the large focus is on the distance learning program because this is the assumption at the time that this document came out that all of the school districts were, were involved in distance learning in some way or another, so that there needed to be a robust description of what distance learning looked like for each district. And so we need to show how the continuity of instruction will take place through distance learning. And even if we're pivoting back and forth between distance learning and in-person instruction, there needs to be a description of the staff roles and responsibilities and how those may have changed and did change based on the results of the pandemic. And there's a big focus on what's happening for the students with unique needs because as we're all very concerned about students who are more vulnerable in these situations and may not be as successful as others, particularly during distance learning. And the document calls out special attention for English learners, students with IEPs, foster and homeless youth, and low-income students. And so we needed to talk about what we're doing for each of these groups of students to ensure continuity of instruction. We needed to talk a lot about our access to devices and connectivity. And of course, we have a lot of information to give about that because that has been one of our major initiatives. We needed to describe how we are monitoring student participation and progress. We needed to talk about the professional development that is being offered to our staff and what resources are provided also to ensure the support of our staff in providing high-quality distance learning. What are we doing to mitigate any pupil learning loss? There's certainly a concern that since many students were not very engaged since last March, that there has been a loss of learning, particularly in language arts, math, and ELD. So how are we assessing what that learning loss is? And then what are we doing to accelerate the learnings to help students catch up to their grade level? So what are those strategies? How will we measure the effectiveness of those strategies? And then in addition to looking at the academics of our, our distance learning and our, our in-person models, what are we doing to address the mental health and emotional well-being of our, our parents, our students, our staff, our families? And so what we need, we need to describe that. What is our outreach to our pupils and our families? And what kind of engagement opportunities are we providing them? And then finally, what are we doing to make sure students are being well-fed? But what is our, our school nutrition policy and process? The final section of this LCP is we need to call out in particular, what are our actions and services that are increasing or improving services for our foster youth, our English learners, and our low-income students? And those of you who have been involved on LCAPs in the past, the three-year LCAPs will recognize this because this definitely is always present in the LCAPs and is present in the LCP as well. That the state wants us to be very responsible to our stakeholders as to how we are addressing this, these three groups of students because there is supplementary funding that is dedicated to these students. And so how are we making the best decisions for the most effective use of that funding in order to best provide for our foster youth, our English learners, and our low-income students? So what follows here is just a couple of items out of the 40 pages that are attached. We're making some recommendations that, again, this is just a short list of the many things that we are asking for your consideration to better increase and improve the services for foster youth, English learners, and low-income students. As you've heard, there are new positions at each school site. There are halftime positions at each school site. The teachers on special assignment, we call them the TOCSAs that are overseen by Michelle Griffith, that are assigned to each school site to, to really provide the outreach and the oversight for the students who are most in need at the schools. They are very involved in what we're calling screen teams, which brings together a group of people across the school to look at data and to make decisions about what kinds of services and supports students need. We know that a .5 position is hardly enough to really do the, the full job. And so we would, we are asking that there be additional supports provided to our schools that have greater numbers of students in need and just basically have greater needs. And so we would increase that .5 teacher on special assignment at Hoover, Garfield, Taft, and Roosevelt to a full-time position. We also know that Taft is a school that has a lot, has been very impacted this year with the pandemic. There's been a significant impact on the one principal at that site to do the outreach to the families, to help families with their connectivity, to provide the devices, to do one-on-one supports, and then also to try to provide the supports for the teachers. And then there's also the preschool program on her site. And so we're recommending a .5 assistant principal for, for Taft School. We're also making a recommendation that there be additional bilingual tech support at those targeted sites. One of the things that we heard from our teachers in our stakeholder engagement meetings is that a lot of time is being spent with families who are having significant difficulties in connecting, staying on due to spotty internet connection perhaps, or not knowing how to manipulate the different, the clever, the different applications that we have. And so that we would add someone at each site to be there to answer questions, maybe to man the phone, to do one-on-one supports if, when that's possible to actually see people and help talk them through pointing at things. Sometimes that's really hard to do virtually. And while there has been additional tech support and time and hours added at the district office, we know that for a lot of people, it's very difficult for them to get to the district office. So we're also looking at adding additional instructional assistance to support the newcomer students. We have programs at Hoover and Kennedy, but we also have newcomer students across our many schools. And so that there could be additional support for these students through these instructional assistants. We're thinking of providing a number of opportunities for teachers, when things calm down a little bit, for leadership activities in the areas of technology and distance learning, progress and data monitoring, looking at curriculum and application choices, social, emotional learning, and then supporting parents, just as some examples. And so that we would want to provide stipends for these teacher leaders. We are also, we've had a lot of conversations with our certificated staff, our classified staff, and their interest in supporting the work that we're doing on different hours, on different types of supports. And so we would like to investigate different kinds of incentives for their additional time to provide those office hours to do the additional check-ins that may be over and beyond their regular hours. And then also another thing that we're considering is that there is right now a part-time person at the district office who's dedicated to family outreach and makes daily calls and check-ins. And it's not enough time because what we're finding is that the outreach to the families, while it begins at the school sites, when, when it's become more of a persistent problem, it precision, excuse me, persistent problem, it gets turned over to Antonio Perez in our office. And then he's got very small amount of time with some support and dedication to making those phone calls and that outreach. And so we believe that that would support that group of people. For the materials, we're also looking at additional materials specifically designed for newcomer students, thinking about how we can get books in the hands of kids. We know that very recently, our wonderful librarians went to a lot of trouble to provide books for families to come and drive through and pick up. That doesn't work for everybody. And so maybe we could put together some, some ways to get the books directly out to the kids. We know that there are a number of ways that are happening now to, to provide that. But we wanted to support that work as well. And then we have some students who have very little access to adequate learning environments. And so maybe one of the things that we can investigate is providing some local learning spaces for students to have more space to have a desk, more space to have connectivity, more space where they're not maybe around a whole lot of other people who are working and talking at the same time. So that would be something that we thought we would want to investigate as well. For professional development, we're looking at contracting with experts such as Doug Fisher. We attended a training of his yesterday about distance learning to provide that effective and culturally responsive distance learning lessons to support our staff and us in supporting our staff. And then we know that there has been a decline in our math scores. We're finding that out now as we're taking the I-Rate test. And so what are some online resources that can target the gaps in math and support students in closing those gaps? So those would be some areas that we would look into. And again, there's many other things. These are just some highlights. For social emotional health, we have started some webinars for our staff, but we know that there are many a variety of ways that we would like to provide support for mental and emotional supports for our staff and for our families. We are looking at a new SEL curriculum. And so there would be training for staff and SEL strategies. And in that new curriculum, when that curriculum is purchased, there are a number of agencies that have been providing training for us at sites that we would want to continue to work with as we develop our skills in this area. And for parent engagement, we have a number of things going on, but one of the things that we heard quite a bit in many of our our webinars and then particularly in our D-LAC meeting most recently, is the need for support for our Spanish-speaking families in access to technology, to devices, to distance learning. So we have Familias Unidas, who right now is offering a series of classes at five different sites. But they've asked for more. The families have asked for more of that. So we'd want to increase that. We have an opportunity for a parent leadership series to really develop our parents as leaders, both at the school size, at the district level, and then within the communities to help each other out. The nutrition, of course, that's, that is the, the meals that are provided at two of our sites that are provided for daily meals for families. And people can fortunately now just come by and pick those up without a lot of paperwork that they have to fill out. That, that, the funding for the, the meals comes out of a separate fund, which is Fund 13. But what we've done is allocated, and this also includes certificated salaries and that kind of thing, but it's approximately $8 million that's been allocated for these actions and services that are in the LCP. So just a brief overview of the stakeholder engagement. As you know, we've had a lot of opportunities for people to give us feedback because we started this work over the summer. And while this plan is just, was written in the past few weeks, we use this, the input that we had been receiving from our staff, our community, through all of the different settings that we had. So we had our committee meetings that took place over the summer that resulted in the plan for the reopening of schools. We had our board meetings that, in particular, the one in July, where there's a lot of staff and parent input around distance learning. We've had a number of staff and parent webinars that have taken place over the summer as well, as well as regular newsletters and feedback from those newsletters and surveys. And then in addition to that, we had some dedicated meetings. We had our LCP meetings. We had two meetings that took place, one in August and one in September, where there was particular focus on the components of this LCP. And then we met with the D-LAC in September as well. So right now we're having the public hearing and then our, we'd like to open this up for discussion. And then our intent would be to make any changes as requested and bring that back for approval next week on September 30, which is the actual due date. So I'd like to now just turn it back over for discussion.
Thank you, Liz. Are there any questions from board members or comments? Go ahead, Dennis.
Thank you, Liz. So the question is, are the texts, the four additional text support people, are those temporary or permanent employees?
So all of these would be, the, the plan is just for this year, right? And then we would see what we would be measuring the effectiveness of, of these different additions to see if they would be long-term or not. The plan right now is not to keep them all for long-term. This is a one-year-only plan.
Okay. And then, I think this is all needed, but a lot of this isn't in the budget. So can we use CARES Act money or are we just making the deficit larger?
No, no, we're, that's definitely, so I don't know if Priscilla wants to answer that, but this is a combination of all of those other additional funding sources. It's not just the state funding, it's also the additional funding. So I don't know if Priscilla can answer.
Good evening, everyone. Yes, when we were looking at the budget, so what we have included in the LCP for 2021 is what we have already in the budget, I mean, the personal costs, but we have also put together what we are anticipating to be receiving from the CARES Act, the coronavirus, and learning loss mitigation, and all of those, including the recalculated supplemental on concentration grant.
Okay, so could I make a suggestion for the next meeting? Could we have a little chart that lists all the things that are incremental? And what were the monies coming from? Hopefully that's not a lot of work.
Yes, we can do that.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else?
Did we have any speaker cards on this item?
Not on this item, no.
Okay, then I just wanted to say thank you very much to Liz. You put in so much work. You put in so much work on this, and I know the state designed this to supposedly be a little easier this year because everybody's their task, but you know, it wasn't necessarily easier than the previous LCAP. So I just wanted to acknowledge your hard work on this. And I also wanted to thank all the staff and parents who attended extra meetings. I know we had a couple of them that, I think it was Janet and I, right? Are we on that together? Along with some other, again, teachers and classified staff who are so busy with everything else, and yet they gave up a couple of evenings to be with us. And then, of course, we had the D-LAC parents and others. So everybody, I think it's a really good plan. I think it really tries to identify some of our students with higher needs and some extra supports that we can really provide students as well as supporting some of our staff. And so they can do the job that they need to do. So I really like the plan and I appreciate all the work.
And I'll just, I want to piggyback on on Elise's comments about the LCP steering committee. Liz, I think you did a fantastic job. You know, leading that and facilitating it, and especially the breakout rooms. And I felt like there was so much really good discussion and thought happening just through, you know, the Google Docs and the breakouts on Zoom and you just did a really great job. It was just kind of like thrown at you in the middle of the summer. So and thank you to all the staff that were on that committee along with us and for putting in that time.
Yeah, and I would just like to echo that as well. I'm really impressed with the additional support for our students. I'm always worried about the students that need the extra support, and I'm very pleased to see that you've included that. I also really liked the Familias Unidas additional support because I think, you know, it's hard to get parents involved during the normal times, and especially now with the technology. I see there are some people who can't get in this evening. So imagine if you were new to this. So I'm just really pleased to see that you've had that. And thank you so much for putting in all the extra work. I know that things keep changing all the time and you just have to keep revising and revising. So thank you for all that time and effort you put in into the parents and staff as well.
And same here. Thank you for the excellent work that you're doing with the district. Sorry, I, you know, myself. I just had a question regarding stipends and incentives for teachers and classified staff. Is this something that you guys like survey people and see who is willing to take, whether it's additional work or extra hours? So if you can just clarify that, please?
Sure. So we haven't surveyed yet because this hasn't been approved yet. So what we would do certainly is put, so we would work with the unions, right, to work on this, and we would develop a structure for how this would work best in terms of, I know in, for the classified, I don't want to misspeak, so tell me if I'm wrong. I know that there there needs to be some attention paid to seniority, right? So we would make sure that we didn't do anything that wasn't appropriate. And then I think for the certificated, one of the things that we were looking at were some structures around, which already exist in the district in terms of grade level leaders. That there's leaders for different content areas and at different grade levels, different school sites, trying to magnify that so that there's more people who had opportunities to participate in some kind of leadership roles. Be voluntary, but they would receive a stipend for participating.
Thank you.
I bear with me for just a second. I'm double checking. So we did just have a card come in on this item. And since this is a public hearing, we're gonna go ahead and take that. Is Dr. Baker, I don't know if you wanted to say anything or if now's a good time?
Now's a good time, but I just wanted to to thank Liz and everybody that participated with the LCP. And when the state first came out with this new document, the LCP, it was supposed to be five pages. When they were touting it, you know, that it was going to be a lot easier and move forward quickly. It's amazing. And this turned out to be 40 in some neighboring districts. It's like 100 pages in some districts. I can't believe it. So I don't know. But thank you for the work, for getting it all completed. And there are new positions on here. And so as as Liz did state, we'll have to work with both associations to make sure that we follow, you know, the contract guidelines. And then also when we go in a direction for temporary people, like for a classified, we don't have temporary people, so that works a little differently, but we can, you know, we can work that out as the board moves forward and approves it next week.
Okay, thank you. So we have a comment card from Ben Packer. And Kyle, if you can allow me to share my screen, I'll pull up my three-minute timer.
Ms. Lawson, it should be available to you now.
I see it. I don't see. Hang on. Oh, I see. Let's try this. There we go. All right, so is is Ben ready?
Yep.
Hi, Ben. Go ahead.
Hi, everyone. I'm Ben Packer. I'm a parent at Roy Cloud. I just wanted to chime in to say, I think this is great. I, especially the fact that students with higher needs and schools with higher needs are being prioritized. I think normally would have chimed in to say that I think we should be doing this, and it's amazing to see that the staff and board has proactively addressed this. So I just wanted to thank you for doing this. And I think this is this is awesome to see, and hopefully we can continue to do this in future years as a prioritizing attention and resources to those who have the least resource and who need it the most. Thanks.
Okay, thank you, Ben. So if there are no other comments or questions, we can close the public hearing. Shout out a few thing else. Thank you, Liz. We'll go ahead and close the public hearing on this. So that brings us to a public hearing 9.2 regarding the Sausal Corporations use of subcontractor. So we'll open the public hearing on that.
Good evening, members of the board, Superintendent Baker, district staff, members of the public. My name is Lauren Charaneski, and I'm an attorney with the law firm Danis Wallower Kelly. We provide legal services to the district, and I've been asked to speak on this item tonight. This public hearing is pursuant to Public Contract Code 4110. And the background here is that in California, there is a set of laws commonly referred to as subcontractor listing laws. Specifically, it's called the Subletting and Subcontracting Fair Practices Act. So those are in place to promote fairness, transparency among contractors, subcontractors, and to prevent bid shopping on public works projects. Generally speaking, any sub, excuse me, any subcontractor who has a subcontract of more than one-half of 1% of a general contractor's bid needs to be identified at the time that the general contractor submits its bid. And that's called listing that subcontractor. In connection with the district's Orion Alternative School project, which was formerly known as the John Gill School Project, the district awarded a contract to general contractor Sausal Corporation. Sausal Corporation had been bid $10,628,000 for that project. At the time that the bids were opened, Sausal had not listed a subcontractor for glazing work on that project. But Sausal did appear to be the lowest responsive responsible bidder. So the contract was awarded to Sausal at that time. Following the contract award, Sausal represented the district staff that it would self-perform the glazing work when the question came up about an unlisted subcontractor. And self-performing work is compliant with the subcontractor listing laws. However, Sausal subsequently entered into a subcontractor with an unlisted glazing subcontractor, National Glass, and that subcontract is in the amount of $401,606. Doing this, subcontracting with an unlisted subcontractor is not compliant with Public Contract Code Section 4107. Under that section, any subcontract in excess of that one-half of 1% of the bid is not permitted. Here, Sausal's bid was $10,628,000. One-half of 1% of that is $53,140. However, their subcontract with the unlisted subcontractor, National Glass, was in the amount of 401,606, which is far in excess of $53,140. Because Sausal entered into that subcontract with National Glass, the district is permitted under the Subletting and Subcontracting Fair Practices Act to, in its discretion, consider whether it should cancel the contract with Sausal for that project at Orion Alternative School. Or whether it should assess a penalty against Sausal in the amount of not more than 10% of the subcontract with National Glass, which would be $40,160.60. The district can utilize its discretion to take either of those two actions only after a public hearing has been held on the matter and after Sausal has been provided with five days' notice in advance of that public hearing. Sausal was in fact provided with notice in accordance with the Public Contract Code by district staff. And this is the public hearing during which the district can hear and receive information and ask questions on this matter before further action is taken. With that, I believe there may be someone present who wishes to speak on behalf of Sausal Corporation. I believe that may be either Craig Wallace or Greg Gillis.
Yes, so I wanted to ask, I know that Craig Wallace is here. I believe I saw his name in the audience. And Craig had put in a speaker's card for the action item, but if he would like to speak. Okay, yeah, it looks like Craig Wallace is ready to speak, so he can go ahead and and do that now.
Oh, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, good. And I'm not on camera, it looks like. I don't know if I'm supposed to be.
No, you're okay.
Okay. Well, thank you for this opportunity to speak. Craig Wallace is my name. I'm an attorney with Smith Curry, and we represent Sausal Corporation. Sausal's a family-owned company, and it's been a Bay Area contractor for almost 60 years now. It takes pride in its work and it wants to do a good job, and it works hard to do that. So a little explanation about the bidding process here. When, I don't know if the board understands exactly how the process works, but the the public contract bidding is a flurry of activity when it happens. And the contractor receives bids from its subcontractors often at the last minute because there's some strategic reasons for the subcontractors to do that. So as the the time comes to submit the bid, the the general contractor receives its bid, it receives a flurry of subcontractors' bids, it has to sort them out, figure out which subcontractors it wants to use, and then it puts them into their bid, as Ms. Chernuski said. And that's what happened here. This bid, though, was done during the COVID process, and as part of that, Mr. Gillis, who prepared the bid, didn't have the ability to have staff with him to help him sort out all these bids and prepare the bid. So he's trying to handle that on his own, number one. And number two is, in the course of preparing this bid, his printer quit working. So he ended up doing the bid, part of it, this listing of the subcontractors by hand. So he's scrambling to sort out the subcontractor's bids, and he's doing the bid by hand. And as part of that, indeed, he forgot to submit the last page, which had the glazing subcontractor on it. So that's what happened in connection with this bid and why this error happened. When the issue was brought to his attention, he owned up to it. He said, yes, that's what happened. We didn't get the glazing subcontractor bid included. They weren't listed. And he tried to address it. He did have a meeting with Mr. DS, and there is some misunderstanding as to what was said in that meeting. But the gist of the conversation was, Sausal said, we'll honor our contract, we intend to honor our contract, and we'll perform. We will take care of this problem for you. Sausal's not seeking any additional money. In other words, the bid they submitted did include the glazing subcontractor's number. So as part of this process, Sausal's not seeking any additional money because the money's already there in their contract. So what happens here is this, the situation has put everyone involved between a rock and a hard place because, as Ms. Chernuski said, there's this listing law. The listing law has some provisions, so if you make an error, you can fix it. One of those is, if you make an error and want to substitute a subcontractor, so if you want to use subcontractor B instead of subcontractor A, there's a process that can be followed. However, that doesn't apply here because there is no subcontractor B. It's just subcontractor A, National Glazing, who didn't get listed. So that process doesn't apply. There's another process in this statute that she mentioned that allows for correction for a clerical error. If you make an error in your bid, you meant to put something down there, but you wrote something else. There's a process to fix that as well. But once again, that statutory process involves two subcontractors. It requires you to give notice to the subcontractor who you meant to identify and subcontractor who you actually identified, which again, we don't have here because there's only one subcontractor. So that remedy doesn't apply. So at that point, with no statutory ability to fix this problem, Sausal did agree, well, we'll self-perform the work. That's what we're left with, and we will honor our contract and do that. However, as part of that process, Sausal learned that it could not obtain the materials for this glazing work because the material suppliers for this glazing work will only sell their product to a certified installer, and Sausal is not a certified installer. So now Mr. Gillis found himself with no statutory ability to fix this problem, and he found himself unable to self-perform because he couldn't get the material. So that's where we find ourselves now. He entered into the contract with National, and that's why we're here for this hearing. I think it's important to recognize for this process, there's no aggrieved party in this situation. The this solution of using National, it's in the public interest. The district gets a glazing subcontractor to perform the work for the price that was bid. The glazing subcontractor gets to share the the money, right, as is intended, to do this work. So those two parties are happy with the with the result. So if we look at it from that situation, no aggrieved party, then we think about the penalties. So the penalties are in the listing laws, Ms. Chernuski explained. However, what Sausal did was is within the spirit of that law. There was no assertion of subcontractor of anything incorrect being performed that would violate the listing law, other than the subcontractor wasn't listed. The penalty provision of that clause gives the board here the option of not imposing any penalty. In other words, the statutory section says that the 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 public entity, the board here, may exercise the option of imposing these two penalties. Its use of the word "may" is different than the use of the word "shall." It provides you with discretion, and it's permissive. It's not mandatory. So the the penalty provision begins that the the board may exercise one of these options. It doesn't have to. So the two options are to cancel the contract or to impose these penalties, which, as Ms. Chernuski said, the the statute says the penalties, it's a penalty amount not to exceed 10% of the contract amount, the subcontract amount. So here, if the board feels it's warranted to impose a penalty at all, we believe that the the maximum penalty is not warranted. The the board should consider that it has the discretion to impose a penalty anywhere from 0 to 10%. The maximum penalty seems excessive in, under the circumstances here where human error is is to apply. So we would suggest if the board feels a penalty is warranted, a lower penalty is warranted, and we would suggest maybe 2.5% would be the proper penalty amount. So with that, we submitted to the board. We're confident the board will make the right decision on this, and once this decision is made, Sausal's looking forward to moving forward with this and getting to work on the project. So thank you very much for the time.
Thank you. Thank you. So this is, this is a public hearing and not an action item, so the board won't be taking action during this item itself, there is an action item later. There are no public comment cards for this public hearing. So with that, is there anybody from the board, or Dr. Baker, or anybody that would like to have a discussion?
Can I just make a comment? I have a comment, or more of a question. As I'm listening to Mr. Wallace speak, he mentioned that perhaps this was a, an error that was done due to, you know, everything he's listed with COVID being one of them, and obviously it's a major thing, and being written by hand, and that the subcontractor page seemed to have been the last one. I just want a little bit of clarification, because then, as he continued to speak, he mentioned that when Sausal tried to go out and get the material, they found themselves not being able to find it. And so I'm a little confused, because I just wanted to understand, was that really an error at the beginning? Or did they decided to add the subcontractor when they determined that they could not get the appropriate material to continue doing that work by themselves?
Am I still, oh, am I still, can you still hear me?
Yeah, we can.
Oh, thanks. The response to that is, the answer to your question is, the price for the glazing subcontractor was in Sausal's bid. So when the bid was submitted, the bid number, the bid amount, it's on a separate piece of paper in the bid from the subcontractor listing. So the bid number included the glazing subcontract price. It's just that the sheet that showed that subcontractor wasn't included. So the dollars were there, Sausal was planning on using that subcontractor and intended it to be that amount. It's simply that the page showing the subcontractor didn't get attached. And then when it found itself in that situation of, well, I don't have a statutory remedy because of the unique situation, we'll self-perform, is what Sausal decided. But at that point, they, Mr. Gillis, found out that he couldn't self-perform, because they couldn't buy the materials from anybody.
If I could also offer some clarification. There is a provision under the listing laws that allows for a clerical error or mistake. However, there's a very specific and short timeline for making that type of claim. And Sausal did not claim a clerical error until several weeks had passed after the bids were opened, and I believe until after the contract had been awarded. In this situation, Section 4107 subdivision C directly contemplates failing to list a subcontractor, and then subsequently subcontracting as being a violation of the listing laws. And that's because bid shopping can happen in that situation. With regard to whether or not Sausal would be able to procure the materials themselves directly, I would defer to either Mr. Diaz or Mr. Robertson for that factual clarification.
And I can respond to that as needed. The, I agree with Ms. Chernuski about that clerical error section. It provides 48 hours to announce the clerical error, and this didn't come to light to anybody until after that 48 hours had passed. That's number one. The other thing with the clerical error is it requires, the statutory procedure requires that the notice of this clerical error be given to both the improperly listed subcontractor and the one you intended to list. So once again, that statutory section wouldn't apply here, because there would be, it wasn't an issue of someone was listed who we didn't intend to list. It was an issue of the subcontractor was listed, it's just that the piece of paper didn't get included. So that clerical error statutory process was just not available. We attempted to apply that, to do that clerical error, and it didn't, it wasn't accepted by the district. So we did attempt to work through the issue with that, or applying that statutory section, but it was not accepted by the district.
Thank you. Any other comments from the board? If not, we can go ahead and close the public hearing. Okay, so we are now on to item 10, the bond consent items.
So moved.
Okay, Dennis?
Second.
Maria, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Ms. McBride?
Hi.
Ms. Marcus?
Tracy Diaz-Silco?
Hi.
Vice President McAvoy?
Hi.
President Lawson?
Hi. Okay, now that brings us to item 11.1, the consideration of the contract with Sausal.
Good evening again, this is Lauren Cherneski from Dan Issa Oliver Kelly. On behalf of the district, introduce this item. This is where the board, following the public hearing, can decide to take action based on that information, whether it would like to exercise its discretion to issue a penalty of up to 10% of the subcontract amount, which would be $40,160.60. And that penalty would be paid by Sausal to the district. Sausal's contract would remain intact, and they would complete all work as required under the contract. The money received by the district would be placed in the fund from which the fund, the district's payment to Sausal was originally taken. So in effect, it would be returned to the bond funds and could be used for other appropriate bond expenditures. The district also has the discretion to cancel the contract with Sausal if it so wishes.
So at this point, I don't know if board members would like to speak, or Dr. Baker? Go ahead, Alisa.
Yeah, I have a question for our administration, I suppose it would be Dr. Baker. Do you stand by the recommendation per what we just heard in the public hearing? Or do you have a revision to that recommendation? Is there anything that you can, is there anything that you would like to add in addition to what we heard tonight from our speakers under the public hearing, or anything that's in this memo? Under 11.1.
I understand the memo completely, and we do have the choices, we have the three choices that are, the two choices that are presented before us this evening. And as we have heard this evening, and I still think I need some clarification, I guess it's part of it that the printer was not working, and that's one of the reasons that they're suggesting that the bid was not completed properly. So it seems that that was, I heard from Sausal's attorney, as one of the reasons that they did not make the correction within that amount of time, Lauren? Or was I incorrect in hearing that?
That was, I believe, what Mr. Wallace reported to the board. I believe that was reported to district staff several weeks after the bid was awarded. There is not an exemption or exclusion for that type of situation with such a delayed period of reporting. And I just do want to clarify that bid shopping can and does happen when a subcontractor is not listed. Bid shopping can and does happen without trying to switch subcontractors. And that is the public policy underlying this. This is not meant to be a hyper-technical gotcha. The act was put into place by the legislature to promote fairness and transparency in the procurement of public works projects.
Okay. I, as the superintendent, I believe we have up to 10% penalty, if I understand this correctly, and I would move forward with the 10% penalty. They knew there was a period of time when that had to occur, and from what I just heard from Lauren, is they did not adhere to that timeframe. So I would move forward in that direction. Now, I'd like, I don't know what other board members are thinking at this point in time. Dennis?
So I, so I thought I heard something different from Don Diaz. I thought he told us that when we got the bid, he did his due diligence and asked specifically about this, and was told they were going to do the work. Is that correct, Don?
That is correct, that was in the post-bid interview, but post-bid interview happened past the 48-hour timeframe.
Okay, thank you. So, so Dr. Baker, where I am is, I would not do the penalty. And the reason I wouldn't do it is we heard from the bond management team that Sausal, actually, I think it was Will Robertson, said they're doing business with them in Mountain View, and they're doing a really good job. And we're going to have a, what, two-plus-year relationship with them? And, and so for me, I would probably just waive it and have us have a really good relationship and go forward and do the project.
Others on the board?
Dennis, can I just clarify, did I hear you say to waive the penalty entirely?
Yes. And the reason I'm saying that is, it's a two-plus-year project, and it is a technical violation. But, you know, if we want to have a good relationship, we want to start out with a positive relationship. Now hopefully, if the board decides to do something, it'll be small enough that they will still have a good relationship. But for the size of the contract and the amount of money, to me, I wouldn't do it. And now I'm not a finance person right now.
I was going to say, that's unusual for coming from the finance guy.
Yeah.
Let's see, I can't find you guys, Cecilia or Maria, did you?
Alisa.
So I was just going to say, oh, no, go ahead, Cecilia. I actually was going to say that, based on our attorney's information and the recommendation, that I would say that I would move with the penalty, just because, again, based on the timeline and the amount of time that it took for them to actually realize that error, even though it might have been a, you know, whatever, a negligence or a last-minute thing. I'm a little torn, because had it been many subcontractors, I would have probably understand a little better, but they were only missing that one subcontractor. So I guess I would just go with.
I couldn't hear what Cecilia said at the end, I don't know if everybody else did.
So you cut out towards the end of your, towards the end of your recommendation, you cut out?
I'm sorry, where did I get cut off? So basically, I would go. Yeah, so I would go with the penalty, again, based on what our attorney is telling us, and that because the amount of time that it took for them to recognize that they made this mistake, whether you want to call it a little mistake or not, what I'm saying is, it was only one subcontractor, and I would have thought they would have been able to recognize that as soon as possible, sooner than later. Had it been more than one subcontractor, I think I would have understood a little more if they would have missed one from, you know, the few, if they had a few. Do that make sense?
Yeah, thank you, Alisa, did you?
Oh, I was just going to say, I'm also torn, because I do appreciate what Lauren was saying, but the reason this is in place is because there is concern with bid shopping, and so there is a reason to sort of have these different consequences. I also appreciate what we heard from Sausal tonight, and the times we're living in. So I'm torn, I think I'm more with Cecilia, that we should have some penalty. I don't know if it needs to be the whole 10%. I think that Salsa was offering something less than that, sort of as a sign of, yes, we made a mistake, but let's move forward together. So I also feel like the 10% of the $400,000 of the whole contract, which is over $10 million, is actually a small penalty for this sort of thing. So, you know, I could do a range from, you know, the 2% or 3% to 10%, depending upon what others said. With that said, Dennis, I also appreciate what you said too, so I could be persuaded to not do a penalty as well. But it does feel like there should be some consequence, just in terms of, you know, the issue that's here.
Yeah, and I would agree, the law was put in place for a reason, and I agree that we want to keep a good relationship with them. So I'm kind of with Alisa with the lower amount of penalty, not up to the 10%, perhaps halfway or 4%.
So Maria kind of hit on what I was going to say. I feel like, yes, like Alisa said, the law was put in place for a reason, and I don't, I don't feel like we should completely waive it. And I would suggest meeting in the middle, you know, well, 5%, although if you meet in the middle between 2.5 and 10, that's a little bit more, but I would cut it down to 5.
So is there a recommendation from the board?
Well, I'll go ahead and make a motion for a 5% penalty.
Sorry, I didn't hear that, can you say that again?
Oh, yeah, so I'll just go ahead and make a motion, I'll see if I get a second and a vote on it. I'll make a motion for assessing a 5% penalty on the subcontractor amount. So let's see if I, let's see, the total amount of that was, well, the 10% would have been $40,160.60. So basically, you know, 5% would be $20,080.30, right?
The motion of assessing a 5% penalty?
Yeah, so I guess it's a 5% of the subcontractor contract value.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
That was Cecilia. So can we have a roll call vote, please?
Tracy McBride?
Hi.
Tracy Marcus?
Hi.
Tracy Diaz-Silco?
Hi.
Vice President McAvoy?
Hi.
President Lawson?
Hi. Okay, thank you, Arun, for hanging in through all that, and thank you, Ms. Chernuski, for being with us too. We will move on now to 13.1, the science curriculum pilot.
So we do have, do we have representative here this evening?
I will, I see that.
We do, Larissa Walder is here to talk about the science pilot. If there are questions, I can give a summary, but if you want more detail, Larissa's here, our science professional development coach. So, do you want me to say something, or is she being unmuted?
I don't see her in the list.
You don't? Okay, so.
What you were looking for?
For me?
Yeah, who were you looking?
Larissa Walder.
There she is, okay.
So sorry, I got kicked off the network. Hi, everyone, I am Larissa Walder, I am the middle school science coach, and we are attempting to do another pilot. So last year, that was last school year, seven middle school science teachers from sixth, seventh, and eighth grade piloted curriculum from a couple of different companies, from Green Ninja and from Foss. And that group of teachers determined that they wanted to try a third set of science curriculum this year, both given the virtual context and because they felt like the other two did not meet all of the expectations that the state has laid out, as well as the district lens for choosing science curriculum. And so we are, Liz and I have prepared this document for you all, which is also in the attachments, and are basically. are basically hoping to move forward with piloting Amplify this year. It's a virtual program, so it works very well in this time of distance learning. And that's, I think that's all I needed to say at the moment, but if there are any questions, please let me know. That's kind of what we are hoping to do. And to just like last year, stipend teachers for their time for piloting the curriculum and then towards the end of this school year, we, we are hoping to make a recommendation to the board and we'll bring that to you all in terms of what curriculum we would like to adopt for sixth, seventh and eighth grade science for future school years. I'm not sure if I know the exact next thing to say, to be honest. I don't, I might need some guidance, guidance on what I need to say next. I'm sorry. Thank you.
No, so I think it's just a report, right? So there, I don't, I don't think you need to say anything more, Larissa. I don't know if there are any particular questions.
I just wanted to say thank you to Larissa and Liz and all the staff who are working on it. Looks like a great plan to me.
Anyone else have any questions or comments?
Yeah, it's just a comment. I would agree with what Elisa said, but I also like to thank the teachers that are piloting it because they have a really two X job right now. And adding this to it's going to obviously be more work. So thank you to them for taking this on.
Okay, looks like we don't have any other comments or questions. Just would say thank you. Also really appreciate the extra time and effort that goes into piloting these programs and finding out, you know, what's going to be best for our teachers and our students. Okay, so that brings us to item 14.1, discussion on COVID-19.
And then it appears on may have been dropped off the call.
Dr. Baker just lost his connection.
Okay, thank you.
So we'll have to wait for him to come back unless, Wendy, I don't know if you had anything you wanted to start with, but otherwise we can take a five minute break now. Alisa, a break?
Yeah, let's take a break.
I was just thinking, I know we have a lot of speaker cards for this and I'm sure Dr. Baker and others have a lot to say. So maybe it does make sense to take a quick five minute break. Back on and then we'll all be ready to go for the discussion. Yeah, thank you.
Five minute break. All right, Dr. Baker, we got you back right on time.
Gee, I'm gonna make sure the iPad is ready.
We have the rest of the board back. Maria, are you there?
Yes, I am.
All right. So welcome back. We are on item 14.1, discussion on COVID-19.
Right, so good evening, everyone. And before I begin, I just want to tell the board and also the public who has members of our community, members of our staff and our teachers, this is the beginning of a discussion to reopen. Nothing has been decided yet. And so Wendy and I are going to do a presentation. We have a slide presentation and I will go through the slide presentation along with Wendy. And then at the end, we can take questions from the board or we can go with the comments from the public, which includes our teachers and our staff and our community. So this is the presentation for this evening, the looking of reopening our schools to in-person learning. So the next slide, Wendy. And bear with me, I just hope I don't get kicked off again. So what I wanted to do is give you a little background, beginning with our journey that started back in July on the 22nd, when the school board voted to start us with distance learning, pre-K through eighth grade through the first trimester. And that trimester ends on November 13th. The governor created a tiered color chart to represent levels of cases. So Samhail County started, started in that purple color chart portion of this chart that you see here before you. And as of 9/22 yesterday, we are now in the red tier. Now, we need to remain in that red tier for 14 continuous days before schools will be allowed to return to in-person learning without a waiver. I just received an email from Superintendent Nancy McGee this evening as we were having our board meeting. And so she said, no one can start prior to October 6th, if you do not have a waiver. She does go on to stay, to state that as we move forward with the red tier and we're in that tier for 14 continuous days, the districts who are seeking some form of in-person learning must develop a plan to re-enter, whether it's just incrementally or more than that for schools. That plan still needs to, as it moves forward, we'll go to the county office of ed and it will also have to go before the county health department. And she said at our Friday meeting, which all the superintendents in the county will be meeting together, she will go into this in with more specifics. So Wendy, if we can go to the next slide, please. So normally what we would be doing for any type of planning to return in person, normally that takes a good six month period in a normal year. And of course, this is not a normal year. So the conversation for tonight are our proposed plans to return, what we have accomplished thus far and for what is on the horizon. Once the board approves our return, we will be ready to bring back staff and students in a safe and well-thought-out manner. Next slide. So the implementation of distant, distance learning from August until right now to this date. So what we've done so far is Chromebooks and iPads for all our students. And of course, our newer Chromebooks and iPads that have been also ordered that are on their way. We have hotspots for students without Wi-Fi access at home. And three or more students, for those students that have three or more children in the household, will give another hotspot. And we're doing that on an individual basis and reaching out to families. Hotspots and upgraded devices for all staff who requested. We have independent study options for families. We have had a lot of training for our teachers and our staff and our teachers haven't even gone beyond our own trainings and taken trainings from the county office of education. Principals are reaching out to parents with newsletters. We heard teachers and we heard families saying that we needed to have the Zoom platform. So we have purchased Zoom and again, thank you to, to our board president Janice Lawson, who helped us by tracking down the CEO to find out what had happened to our order and why it is taking us so long to get it. And so that purchase of that platform is for our teachers, our staff and our administrators. And then we also have partners serving childcare needs and working with some of our students on site. By working with some of our students on site, those are the pods that, some call them pods, some call them hubs. And at this point in time, we have the YMCA, the REACH program with, which is with Parks and Rec, the Boys and Girls Club and Kids Corner, which is two of our school sites that are having, working in the pods or that cohort guideline that was put out by the county health department, which indicates that you could have 12 students and two adults in that cohort. And it needs to remain in that fashion. And that is different from a waiver or from a plan that would be developed for schools to come in a different manner to in-person learning. This is not in-person learning that is taking place by these outside entities that are our partners. This is more of an assistance and children are there during the day with these childcare providers or our partners to help them with the distance learning. And there is, there are normally two adults and 12 children. We have re-examined student schedules at week four and Liz Wolf, along with Linda Montes is meeting with each of the principals to look at their schedules because we did hear from staff a few weeks ago that the schedules needed to be looked at because of the synchronous and the asynchronous learning and, and instruction that was going on needed to be modified and changed. And so each of the principals are working with their teachers at grade levels to change those schedules and that's being done now as we speak. And some have completed several grade levels and will be sharing that with their with their families and their community if they haven't already done so. Next slide. So why is there a need to reopen? So we could stay like we are through first trimester, but I have been receiving many concerns from parents, both general ed and special ed of pre-K through first grade students about the concentration of their children at home during distance learning, the time management and the navigating of the online platforms and this whole issue of building social relationships, which the children are unable to do. Connections made amongst students and staff and students and students are not as effective. Concerns for parents unable to provide distance learning instructional support at home. And then concerns from staff about the distance learning workload. Next slide, please. So as of September 22nd, the new California guidelines for in-person learning are taking place. Right now, there's the waiver option. If you don't have a waiver right now, no one can start without a waiver until you have a plan. At the earliest you can start, according to the email I just received, which maybe that'll change on Friday, is October 6th. So currently, Samhail County Ed, as I stated previously, in the state's new monitoring system. And we are going to put this PowerPoint up online so people can see it and go to that link. When, again, when the county remains in that tier for at least 14 consecutive days, schools may begin to offer in-person learning on campus without the waiver by following the four health and safety pillars. These four health and safety pillars were developed by the county office of education along with members from county health and along with representatives from each of the school districts within Samhail County. The pillars are face coverings, six feet, physical distancing, following health and hygiene protocols and limiting gatherings. So since Samhail County is in the red tier, we can consider phasing in a hybrid model of learning where students are on campus for in-person learning for part of the day, the week and learn independently at home, part of the day or the week. And now I'll turn the rest of the presentation over to Wendy.
Thank you, John. So as you may have remembered, it seems like a long time ago, back in the spring and in June and moving into July, we were considering returning back to campus with students in the fall and August, like we would traditionally do each year, but in a modified version. And we discussed various options and started the work on what that would look like until we received more information in July and the board determined to start in distance learning in August with first day of school. But a lot of work had already been completed through various committees, including the health and safety committee and the ed services committees and HR had a committee as well and how we would manage the transition between our, our ways of instructing students and running in the educational system for many, 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 many years to this new form. And so many things were already started and some things halted because we didn't have students on campus. But what was great is we could spend some time processing early on. We, once students were settled and tech devices and hotspots and so forth all worked out, making sure everyone was settled, we jumped right back into examining what we need to do. As John mentioned, we usually take six months. There's a long runway to plan out the beginning of a school year. We start in January to plan the start of an August school year. So with that, we started meeting and talking through eventually what it would look like when it were to happen. And that could have been October, November, December or onward. So with that, I do want to commend our facilities department. Martin Cervantes and Don Diaz as well have worked really hard on making sure that they are completely up to, up to speed with the health guidelines that are recommended for, from the CDC and from other health organizations on what were to occur when we bring students back. Part of that includes the ventilation filter systems. We use the MERV 13 and they're on cycle to be replaced at recommended time intervals and are already installed. So we started that process early because we do have staff on campus, of course. So although students are not there, we have many, many staff that have returned to work or are working on a staggered schedule right now. Wellness checks and temperature check routines are in place for staff and students when they return. Currently, that system is in place for staff. We have a temperature kiosk or multiple temperature kiosks at sites. And there is a Google form that is used for wellness checks that started in place in July for when staff returned. And that is monitored very closely by one of my staff members in human resources. And Erin Keiko, who you met earlier. And she is in charge of ensuring that we are meeting all of the guidelines for tracking, tracing and notifying employees in this case regarding anything COVID-19 related or symptoms or concerns. And then Antonio Perez is the person in charge for student tracking and tracing should we come on campus. So we've had, you know, quite a few people that we've interacted with that are concerned about COVID-19 or, you know, symptoms and so forth that they believe that they have. But luckily, we've been working in a very safe environment so far. So that's great. All PPE is in good supply. Martin did a fantastic job ordering things very early. And everything we have on supply meet CDC guidelines for staff, including masks. Even if they're thin masks or they are the blue disposable masks or other types of masks that people are purchasing on their own. We, we are noticing that all of these meet CDC guidelines. And then we do have employees that will be working closer than six feet with children, for example, our nurses. So we want to make sure that they have all of the appropriate PPE for these, for the interactions that they will be having specifically, and that has been ordered. We also are recognizing we'll need a separate area. We're calling it the waiting room for students who may show symptoms during the day. So that is set up and will be supervised by an adult, but it will be on a separate location on campus. For example, the MUB. So typical scrapes and Band-Aid needs and so forth will still go through the office. But those that are showing symptoms, including staff members, will also go to the waiting room. And parents would be expected to pick up students within 30 minutes. Classrooms will have plexiglass installed. Actually, Martin and his crew have been working on that for quite some time now in general, because it takes a long runway to, you know, install plexiglass on many, many, many student desks around campus on, on all of our campuses. And so that will, of course, be in place. We also will be working on drop off and pickup procedures. And because that will change a little bit, students will need to arrive on campus, have their temperature taken. And a wellness survey will need to be completed by students and staff, of course, that will continue on each site. So that pickup policies and, and routines and then the pickup for families and so forth will be communicated through the principals. Regular COVID-19 for staff is being finalized. We did work with a couple of organizations and we're getting the final details just this week on the COVID-19 testing and how we can have that available and in place before students return for staff. And then incrementally throughout the year. Bathrooms, in addition to being assigned bathrooms, so in, in primary grades, the bathrooms are, you know, in classrooms in most cases, but also in first grade, there's a shared bathroom that you might see in the hallway and so forth. So that would be cleaned at least three times per day. And then regular thorough cleaning schedules in between class sessions and after school. So those were things that we had started, halted and then continued and finalized details as we're progressing forward for whenever our return date is. So there are some realistic concerns and this slide is really important for staff and parents and of course, the board and, and others to review. These are things that keep me up at 3:00 AM. As I look at the magnitude of what this will possibly affect students and staff. So we are going to be sending out a survey and I'll speak to that in a minute. That will go out tomorrow to parents and staff. And we need to learn a lot of information about where people are thinking in this regard. As John mentioned, we are looking at bringing back our youngest students. And so that will start with having parents in preschool TK, kinder and first grade. Parents of special ed students as well. And some of our newcomer classrooms complete a survey that will ask families what their wishes are in terms of returning. But as a result of those numbers, we will have a percentage of families that want to keep their students in a district, in a distance learning environment. And then of course, families that want to have their students return in person, you know, for a portion of the week or the day or what have you. And those schedules are still even being processed right now. We want to run those by our teachers and get more input. But we have a general sense based on the need to meet instructional minutes, what some possibilities are, which I'll share in just a minute. But as a result of the survey information, I want to be really clear that normally this type of enrollment and staffing occurs between February and August. And I want people to understand that when we get that data back, it is very likely that we will need to move students into a district-wide virtual academy by grade level, of course, and staff accordingly. For those families that want distance learning. And then look at the enrollment numbers that will continue in an in-person setting. So this can result with teachers having different students moving forward for whatever that start date might be. Children having different classmates and perhaps having a different teacher, of course. It just depends on how the numbers essentially shake out per site and district wide. We also have a whole nother layer of school of choice. Our dual immersion programs, our bilingual programs, some of our specialty programs will be affected by this change in the, in the next, you know, month or two months or what have you when school reopens. And so I'm, we are concerned and we need to just be prepared for the fact that children may not continue to have a seat at their school of choice this particular school year, depending on enrollment numbers. But seats will be saved certainly for next year, 21, 22. So that is hard to hear, I recognize. But as we get more information and more data, and my goal is to bring you back data next week on the 30th. The results of the, the surveys will be presented next week on September 30th at the board meeting. And so we'll have a better sense of what we're dealing with number wise as we progress forward. We also have the concern about staff. So that's one thing that, you know, is, is very concerning to me. We want our staff to feel that they are in a safe environment. We know that we are meeting all of the guidelines that have been laid out. That is a top priority in our district to ensure that staff is returning. We already have staff working and they've practiced these methods and have tried out the temperature kiosk and the hand washing and et cetera. So I feel, you know, good that we've taken one step forward. But when we bring students back and add that another layer, it's going to bring more complexity to it. And I recognize that staff members will need to make difficult choices based on underlying condition or what have you, whether they will choose to remain as a teacher this year or another classified staff member or management in our district. There are leave options available. We've sent them out to staff multiple times over the last six months. And my department, specifically Erin Keiko, is managing those that are needing a medical review and we'll go through the interactive process. But we also recognize that there are staff members that may just be worried about coming back. And so I'm hoping that the start of these conversations will just provide information for people to make reasonable decisions. You know, we want every staff member to be still working and feeling good about working with children in the environment in which they choose. But those that may need to take leaves, I'm concerned about. We already have a shortage of staff in general in the Bay Area and hiring in October, November, December onward is, I don't want to say impossible, but very difficult. And so when a teacher or a staff member takes leave, the reality is that we will need to fill that, that vacancy with a substitute teacher or hire another person or another staff member to fill that role. And it's difficult to do that at this time of year. So I want to just, you know, I'm sure the board already recognizes that. Another item that I will bring to you as we process schedules and timing. You know, Martin and his crew are working carefully on looking at the schedule needed to clean in between classes after school. And between classes and so forth, bathrooms, there is a possible need for additional day custodians. I was prepared to bring this to you in July, but we removed it from the agenda item in July because we are moving in a different direction. But that need still exists. And so as grade levels are added eventually, as we progress along, there will be a need for additional day custodial support. We can start off with possibly six, but then eventually we'll, we'll need to move to 12. And then of course, obtaining our agreement with an organization for testing. And that's in the works, so I'm feeling confident about that, but nothing has been signed, sealed and delivered yet. And then of course, working with our unions and I'll go over the timeline. It's been great to have conversations with our unions. I started about a month ago, giving Erin Washburn, the RCTA president, a heads up that, you know, eventually we're going to come back and we just need to sort of wrap our minds around this. And have had multiple meetings recently, of course, in the last few weeks with our staff. And then recently with CSCA, I had a great conversation with Maria Stockton today. And we'll be having more of these conversations as we progress on. So getting back to the surveys, I mentioned to you that there will be a staff survey and a parent survey. They will open tomorrow evening and we'll go through the 28th. I recognize this is a short timeline. We're going to beg people to fill this out, but we really need this data urgently so that we can start making staffing decisions, as I mentioned, it's a longer runway. And especially when we add on the layer of potential leaves and reshuffling possibly students, possibly staff. You know, whether we start in a month, two months, three months, we need as much time as we can get. So I would encourage people to remind their neighbors and friends and staff members to fill this survey out. That would be very helpful. Now in the survey, we're going to look at proposed example schedules. And these may not even be final. We're still in such the initial early stages of this process that I almost hesitated putting possible schedules out. But I recognize as a parent myself, as a staff member, you want to understand a little bit more about what's possible. And those example schedules were strictly created based on the need for certain instructional minutes by grade levels. Of course, the ability to return in person or remain in distance learning. That's one of the questions, whether staff needs leave options. And we also have a section in there on the parent input on experiences with distance learning. And then recognizing that class groupings will likely change and teacher reconfigurations. So starting with the initial potential schedules, and this is one idea. I want to make sure everyone's clear, these are not solid set in stone, that we are in the beginning stages of having conversations with staff affected by these schedules and certainly potential MOUs with our unions. But I thought it would leave a lot of confusion if some ideas were not presented tonight. So for preschool, luckily, in working with our principal Edna Carmona, we are able to continue a full day preschool schedule, which is great. So that has been in place through distance learning. But in recognizing the cleaning schedule and analyzing that process, that full day preschool can remain. And then they also, the second option for families that currently exists is the half-day preschool. And so students will be split into two cohorts in the morning and afternoon with cleaning in between cohorts and of course, after school hours. Now for TK through first grade, so TK and kindergarten students have a state mandate of at least 180 instructional minutes per day. And for first grade, 230 instructional minutes per day minimum. So in order just to meet the minimum, we could have option one, an AMPH cohort of 150 minutes in person. So a group, half the class would come in the morning, half the class would go in the afternoon. And then each group would have 30 minutes in kindergarten and in TK of independent work at home, independent learning directed by the teacher. And same with first grade, they would have 150 minutes, half in the morning, half in the afternoon with 80 minutes of independent learning at home because they have more instructional minutes needed. And then cleaning in between cohorts and after school. And that is the schedule that Martin is grappling with right now as a possibility. One of, I'm sure many that will come up. Option two is the version that was originally brainstormed in July as an option. There's pros and cons for all the options. TK, kinder and first grade would come two days a week in person with their teacher and three days at home doing independent and/or asynchronous work with all students at home on Wednesdays. So there'd be a group that would attend in person on Monday, Tuesday, and then a separate group of the other half of the class that would attend on Thursday, Friday. And therefore, cleaning could occur after school on Wednesdays. And of course, for both groups, regular bathroom cleanings throughout the day. So a proposed timeline to consider, keyword proposed. Remember, this is our initial brainstorm. We have been thinking a lot about what it could look like. This is not final by any means, but I did want to give you a sense of, of what has been happening and where it can go. And I know this looks like it might be organized in an odd way, but if you can look at the bottom right corner, in August and September, we stood in with our leadership teachers to notify of possible reopening. Recently this week, met with the RCTA climate committee. It was able to discuss, you know, what some of these ideas were. And a lot of this was driven with the fact that we were looking through the waiver paperwork and getting familiar with it. But then with that announcement of September 22nd, you know, it really allowed us to process this in a different way. Because we could go in a direction without a waiver potentially in the future as, as things opened up and, and time passed with lower cases. And then of course, we have tonight, the school board discussing the opening plans. We did meet with site administrators today to discuss this information. And I met with CSCA President Maria Stockton. We're very excited to meet with teachers tomorrow afternoon at 3 o'clock. And then classified staff, we're going to meet at 5:30 during their union meeting. And discuss much of this information so that they're starting to grapple and give feedback and, and process some of this as, as we have been doing. And then September 30th is the next board meeting. We will continue with more of an update. And then prior to the October 7th board meeting, which, which, in which we will, between now and then, have our CSD staff meet with medical professional panel to talk through health and safety concerns and meet with representative teachers. That's been done in a few other districts. And, you know, they have found that it's just helpful to really understand deeply a little bit more and, and ask questions and so forth. So those would be available as an optional meeting for those that want to attend and participate. And then on October 7th, we could have the board review survey data. My goal is the 30th, but I'm sure there might be follow-up information. The last time we did a parent survey, 60% of families responded. And we really need to have much closer to 100% as we progress forward because it affects staffing and changes, as I mentioned, in classroom configurations and possibly sites. And so with that, it's likely the office staff will need a little bit more time. So we'll have preliminary data next week and then hopefully final date on the 7th. And then a proposal that the board makes a decision on reopening on October 14th. And then October 26th is a goal to consider for a proposed return date for preschool through first grade. Now I do recognize that people are probably wondering about other grade levels. I know that there have been conversations about a timeline to consider with opening other grade levels. But we do really want to make sure we're getting this right and focus on a smaller group now. And, and determine how that goes and, and consider progressing in adding other grid levels as we, as we go on into the year. So that concludes. So that concludes the information we're sharing tonight. And I'd like to stop sharing my screen and open it up for discussion with the board. Thank you.
Wendy, so I'll just put this out there for board members who would like to. Elisa, was that raising your hand or were you fixing your sweater? Okay. Comments or questions? Anybody?
Yeah, I had one clarifying question. Wendy, in the more detailed presentation about possibilities and timelines, we're focusing in on the TK through first grade. I know earlier we had conversations about special ed students and newcomers. Is that on a different timeline or just? You haven't thought it through yet. I mean, I know there's a lot, you know, this is really the early stages, but I'm just curious about that. I don't know if I missed it.
Oh yeah, thank you, Elisa, for that question. Yes, it is, yes, all TK, all preschool through first grade, which of course would include special ed and general ed students. In those particular grade levels right now is our focus. And then newcomer students, we are analyzing that in more detail. We do have a self-contained classroom at Hoover and Kennedy, there are supports as well. So those two classrooms are being reviewed more critically right now. And I know Dr. Montes, who oversees newcomer, the newcomer program is in conversations with Liz Wolf and so forth on how this will unfold. But at this point in time, we're looking at preschool through first grade, general ed and special ed students. And then the newcomer piece, as I described.
Any other questions, Dennis?
I have questions, but I was going to go ahead and let other board members.
Go ahead, Maria.
Well, I just had a clarifying question for the dates of reopening. It would still depend on the health data, right?
Provided that, yes, we're still in that red tier, Maria, nothing has changed, we can move forward with reopening. Now, if something were to change, and I probably will find this out on Friday, that we went back to purple, then I think we'd be back to a waiver process.
Okay, that was my question.
But I would have, I'll have to ask that. I will need to ask that.
Okay, and that will be conditions on the ground for Redwood City, not for other locations, right? By that mean, I hear a lot of people talking about, well, you know, in this location, they're doing this. And in this city, they're doing that. And my question is, we're focusing on what's happening in Redwood City with our families and our students. We're not going to focus on the data from, let's say, Daly City.
Well, the data that they focus on, and I know many of you know this more than I do because you attend the the elected officials meetings that occur every other week. It's based, the tier that you're in is based on the county. It's based on the county. So all of all the school districts at this point in time that are in San Mateo County, if you have not applied for a waiver, then you can go in this other direction of creating a plan after we have been in this tier two, which is the red tier for 14 consecutive days. And at this point in time, there are some private schools. There are two schools within the county. I believe it's Hillsborough and Menlo Park that did apply for a waiver. I didn't see that it was approved on the list yet. When I looked yesterday, it was not there. But as we move down this road, if something were to change, it would change for the whole county. It would not just change for Redwood City.
Okay, but other people have talked about like what they're doing in Palo Alto or, you know, San Jose, that does not impact us.
No, no.
Only San Mateo County, right?
Correct. It's for San, this is what, at this point in time, we're in, yeah, for San Mateo County. And what we decide as the Redwood City School District on how to come back in person is up to us.
Okay, great. Thank you.
So Wendy, a clarifying question. I'm not sure it was said as directly as a conversation I've had. The reason that we're having these issues with students moving, et cetera, is this is because we're asking for teachers and staff to volunteer to come back. This is not a mandatory, everybody comes back. Is that correct?
So, so in a typical year, enrollment drives our staffing. And so in this particular case, in a typical year, right, we would have 7,000 students. We staff for 7,000 students and teachers accordingly. So assuming all students remain in our district, we still have the same number, but now we have two different pathways. And this is where it becomes complicated and frustrating, trust me. And as a parent, worrisome, I'm going to be honest. And the reason why is because if I have a quarter of my staff, of the staffing, teaching staff that cannot come back to in person or will not, or take unpaid leaves, then we have a problem. But let's assume everybody comes back. That's our goal and that's what we hope for and want or are available to be teaching in some sort of manner, whether that's distance learning or in person. The concern, Dennis, is that that if half of first grade wants full distance learning, but that's district wide, we would need to provide that, right, assuming, provide 400 seats of distance learning, which is why I said district wide, it would need to be like a virtual academy. That will leave openings at sites because those 400 children are moving to a district-wide virtual academy. And then we would also need to have the teachers that would equate to 400, so approximately 15 or what have you, would need to then be transferred to a virtual learning academy, right? So this is where it starts becoming complex. So yes, we could be taking teachers away from school sites and providing the opportunity for them to teach in a distance learning setting. But then we'd have to manage the remaining students in the classroom if that teacher were to leave technically and go into another location, which in this case is virtual. So that could mean that students then would need to move to either the same school, if there are seats available in that grade level, or possibly different schools, a different school. It really will depend on the numbers that come back from the parent survey and the staff survey. It's a monumental task, which normally we handle in February, March and April in a typical year. And we don't have these wide changes. But that's what we're creating right now. And every district will be doing the same thing. This isn't just unique to Redwood City. Because when you look in totality, it's a numbers game and a staffing and a class size ratio that we're managing. I hope that helped answer.
Yeah, and can you give, do you have any sort of update on what your thinking is with testing in terms of students and staff?
Yes. John, did you want me to speak to that?
Dennis, as you know, we've been working, as you, we started working with Stanford back in, I want to say right before COVID hit and we left. And I believe, is it Alisa and Janet that sit with me on that committee? Am I correct? I think it's two of you.
The Stanford Committee, yes.
Yeah, Stanford Committee. And so when we were meeting with them prior to COVID, we were talking about the need for especially the mental health support for our neediest students and our, and our parents, those are our most vulnerable. And so at the same time during the summer in working with Stanford, I also mentioned that we're going to need the COVID testing assistance too. So when we met last week in regard to the the mental health piece, we got that part that Stanford's moving forward with. They're hiring a psychiatrist that'll just work between the two school districts, Redwood City and Sequoia High School District. And then they're bringing on the interns that will actually be the counselors that will work with students, families and also teachers that may need some additional help in the mental health arena. So that's set. So now what they're working with it for us is the testing piece. And what I'm asking for, and we, excuse me, and what I'm asking for is for them to pony up the dollars for the tests. And now Wendy's office has done a lot of legwork already with Stanford. And what I'm trying to do is get them to pony up the dollars to do all the testing. Does that help, Dennis?
Yes. And then the last question is, are you pursuing the waiver process in parallel? So if the county flips back?
Good question. Good question. I think I'd like to find more information from the meeting that I'm going to on Friday with the superintendents. And if that's a matter that will get me to where I want to be to bring back the most vulnerable students that are in our district at this point in time, I will go down a parallel pathway. Because from my understanding, from what I'm reading, the manner in which this plan needs to be created, created is mirrored with the waiver. That's what it says right now. Now, I could get into this meeting and it could change, but right now it seems that your plan that you need to have for reentry is going to be mirrored on that waiver application that we received several weeks ago. On what?
Thank you.
All details was.
Thank you.
Other questions? Okay, Elisa, did you want to go?
Oh, I was just going to say, I mean, I think there's so many questions and so many things to work out. I definitely want to hear from some of our speakers tonight. And I know that this is going to be an ongoing question because I think, you know, there's just so many things to work out. Certainly the health and safety of our students and our teachers and staff is the utmost thing. And I think we are going to have to keep a close watch on the data. Maria, I think you were sort of getting to this, but you know, there's the countywide data and then they do have data individually by cities. And so we can also look at Redwood City data and North Fair Oaks data. And they're upping testing in the North Fair Oaks area. They have been the last couple of months. And then also the San Mateo County Convention Center is going to open another site where was it 1,000 a day? Yeah, I think 1,000 a day tests, so 5,000 additional tests will be other ways to get data. But I think we're going to have to pay close attention to the health data as we move forward, whether we're, you know, in purple or red or what have you. And then just all sorts of questions about workload for staff as we move forward. You know, implications, Wendy, all the stuff that you talked about. So I just, I feel like there's, there's a lot. So I don't even know exactly which questions to ask right now. I think we're in such a beginning stage. So I certainly appreciate all the work that you've put into it to begin us thinking about all of this.
And then also, Elisa, to remember that they started testing children. They just started testing children last weekend too. And so what I'm hoping in my request is to bring some of that testing to the Fair Oaks Clinic. I don't know if we'll get it, but I put in the request for that because they started testing children on Saturday, but it was up at at the San Mateo Fairgrounds, if I'm not mistaken. So it was Saturday, and I don't think they did Sunday, but they're doing another Saturday this weekend too.
Yeah, because I think that's really important. The testing has got to be a component of all of this. And I know that, you know, many of the local clinics or doctors, they won't test unless you've got symptoms. And so we need to make sure that we can be testing just to see if we have asymptomatic and, you know, all that kind of stuff. So. And I'll also just mention that I really appreciate you seeking out funding for the testing because in talking to Menlo Park, they are going to be paying for weekly testing of their staff. And it's $77 a test. And that, I believe, is just sort of the going rate. I don't think, they're working with Stanford. So I don't believe Stanford's trying to make a lot of money off of them, but that's sort of the cost. So it is a significant cost, any of the testing that we would supply, right? So I think we have to be mindful of that is, and that, Maria, you sort of got to this again, is we have to think uniquely about our school district. Because I know we're getting a lot of messages comparing us to other school districts. Every school district is different in terms of the amount of resources they have, the population they're serving, the infection rates, how many essential workers they have, what kind of living conditions students live in. There are so many variations that we need to focus on Redwood City. And I know that Dr. Baker and the team will be doing that. We know, we know our district and we just need to, you know, stay focused on that. So I appreciate, you know, we need to look at best practices and we want to learn from other districts, but we need to do what's right for our district.
Yep.
Thanks, Elisa, for making that point because that was something I wanted to talk about too. Am I muted? No, no, you can hear me. Okay, I just had a couple of questions to clarify. For the audience, Wendy, can you define what a newcomer is?
I'm going to defer to Linda Monte. She is the expert and loves to speak about this. So go ahead, Linda. I can answer.
I do love to speak about them. So newcomer students are those students who have been with us for less than three years. And when their parents completed a home language survey, it indicated they spoke a language other than English. And so then we assess for their language levels. And they're also students who are born outside of the US.
Great, thank you. Regarding the special ed students, it sounds like you're only looking at bringing back the TK K1s special ed. Does that mean like the 3-5 SDC is not being considered at this point?
That's, that's true. We had a large discussion with principals today. And so it's their thoughts for us to think about. And then we need to definitely work very closely with the special ed department and Dr. Paulino to see if it's a matter of which we can go in that direction. The other piece was, we were looking also to make sure that the classroom spaces were available. Because as you do know, and I forgot to mention, and I was, it was brought to my attention that PCC is also create, has a hub, a learning hub. And so these hubs that we have at several of our different school sites are using classroom space, are using classroom space at this point in time. So we would have to take that all into consideration too. So it's not a definite no yet, Janet. It's more work that needs to be investigated.
Wendy, you had mentioned the Google Wellness, the Google form for the wellness check. How often is that filled out?
Every employee is expected to complete that before 9:00 AM daily. But if there's also strict information about whether an employee is experiencing symptoms or when they arrive to work, the very first thing they do is take their temperature, they're immediately supposed to leave campus and notify their supervisor, but HR also receives that information. And that is how we have been successful over the last few months in the tracking and tracing process. We've received very little guidance from our county, I have to say, but we actually are on weekly trainings and webinars with various attorney groups that have given us up-to-date information. And Erin Caicos, who you met earlier, is in charge of that piece for staff in our district and Antonio Perez for students. Also, our nurses are fully trained on the tracking and tracing process. I apologize, I didn't mention that. And will be brought into the fold when students return on campus as another set of hands to assist in this process, either through in the notification, communication to families and to assist with our waiting room here and there as they can. So so that that process is, has been in place for staff that have returned to work, whether they're working remotely or working onsite, they complete that each day. And then there's a member of my team, Jennifer Nichols, who monitors that and reaches out and works with Erin Caicos immediately.
Thank you. So I mean, I can go on with questions, but since this is kind of early stage conversation, I'm going to hold off on some of them. And we can take the public comments now if the board is ready for that.
Janet, can I just say one more item? I apologize. I've seen a few things in the chat regarding regarding rural immersion and bilingual programs and the concern about those programs ending or being altered. And I certainly don't want that to happen. I do need to look at the staffing because teachers that teach in bilingual settings have specialized credentials called BCLads. And that's a special authorization from the state that allows teachers to teach in that setting because they've proven they have a certain, you know, academic proficiency to do that. And language proficiency, I should say, to do that. So with that, once again, it will determine when we look at numbers. So with that, once again, it will determine, when we look at numbers, which families are seeking a distance learning environment in a dual immersion setting still, and which families are wanting an in-person. I think the most difficult one we're going to be managing is the Orion Mandarin immersion program, just because of its size. I mean, the number of teachers are small in general. So that is, you know, of concern to, just to review and analyze. So I don't want to put anyone in panic mode, but I do want just to, I never get to speak about the realities of HR in this regard and the nitty gritty involved in staffing and matching of enrollment. And we're going to be doing that on such a tight schedule over this next month. And will likely create challenges and likely, you know, result in movement of staff and students.
Can I ask one question before we move on to speakers? So not to raise any more anxiety, I know that we received some emails from teachers. But when we decide if we are coming back after being on the red and after the 14 days, when will be, when will be, when will we consider coming back? Is it after the survey, after you get those responses to see who's actually coming back to in-person or distance learning? And how much time are we going to give ourselves to actually make the decision? So that all the parents and the teachers know that it's not going to happen in the next 14 days. And maybe is it another month from now, you know, so that would be my question.
So the timeline that we put up was the possibility of starting that last Monday in October. And that's a possibility. It's not a date set in stone. We will have, once we get more information, and as Wendy was explaining about the parent survey and the teacher survey, and I guess classified, we'll talk to classified also, what that data looks like and bring it back to you, we'll have a better understanding if that is still the same date that we can accommodate. It may be, it may not be, but we will have those discussions prior to the board making any decision. Alisa.
Yeah, you know, the only, you know, the one other thought I was just, thank you, Cecilia, for your question because it just prompted me thinking of something. So, you know, if you, we look at kind of with the earliest, you know, we could possibly bring back kids in person, given everything that we have to do to do that, would be October 26. That's really only two, two and a half, three weeks from the trimester end. And so I do think we need to think about report cards and, you know, teachers in a classroom and all that kind of stuff. So again, I think we need to think about that in terms of timing. It may be as we collect data and move forward. I realize that every day is precious when you have a child who's learning. I understand that. But there's also a lot of workload and stress going on behind the scenes if we start moving classrooms the first trimester. Anyway, just, you know, I think we need to, it may be less of an issue for the younger grades. I don't know. But I do think, you know, I just want to throw that into one more.
Okay.
So I think we should go ahead with the public comments. We have a number of cards. So let's get through those. And if that's okay. Okay, I will share my screen. So just a reminder that public comments are limited to three minutes. And so when it gets to the end of the timer, you are going to be muted, whether or not you're finished. And I'm not in control of that, just so you know. So first speaker is Whitney Glockner Black.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yeah, go ahead, Whitney.
Great, thank you. Dear Dr. Baker and members of the school board, first, I'd like to commend the teaching staff and administration at Roosevelt for a great start to the year. Distance learning is challenging. The complexity is staggering. And I can see how hard everybody is working to make sure it's as positive a learning experience as possible. However, I'm growing increasingly concerned about children accessing YouTube via school-sponsored devices. The content restrictions set by the district are not strong enough for many other, many children, including mine. First, the content contains ads, both in the form of pre-roll video as well as embedded advertising. These ads can range dramatically from including ads for seminars on pickup artistry. A lot of the content they are able to freely access is sexual in nature and contests, contains sexist, racist, and non-inclusive messages. I sent some images to members of the school board before the meeting. I'd encourage parents to explore their children's devices a bit. Many children can't understand the moral ambiguities presented by this content at the tender age of five. The content's also highly addictive. Many of the most popular gaming, shopping, makeup, and other questionable categories are available to the students. Effects of content binging on kids' behavior and mental health are well documented. I experienced them firsthand during lockdown this spring. I've canvassed anecdotally and found that this is a problem for a lot of other parents. I would be, I would be happy to gather more thoughts on this. But given the timeliness of this meeting as a forum, I thought I would bring it here first. I want to say that the staff and administration have been supportive of my feedback. I appreciate they've engaged and acknowledged the problem. However, I feel we need to move quickly to find and implement a solution. Accessing this content causes behavioral and mental health issues. This is not a parenting issue. We must ensure that school devices can only be used for education, not entertainment purposes. We'd like the teachers to be able to continue to use appropriate videos from YouTube, but children should not have access to browse it openly, and parents should be able to control content their children see. Additionally, we'd like to ask that the district remain open to working with parents to eliminate other problems that arise throughout the year. It's a difficult year, but key to helping kids bridge the distance and not fall behind this year is that we make it easier for them to focus and filter in the right messages. It's easy to say this is a teacher problem or a parent problem, but I think we all agree it is a children problem. I would like to ask the district to acknowledge the problem, that it needs a resolution, and ask that we identify a solution expediently. Every day that goes by, we're losing educational hours our kids need. I know there are many ways to solve the problem, and you are consulting with parents who can provide direct expertise in the area. I hope we'll find a solution quickly. Thank you. I will give you 18 seconds back.
Thanks, Whitney. So Kyle, I don't know if you want to briefly address that or if we want to come back to that later.
Yeah, so I received the first set of emails from Ms. Black last week from the admin team at Roosevelt. I started looking into the issue and was able to confirm that our current setting on YouTube, there are three different settings for moderation on YouTube. Ours is currently what they call strict restricted mode. So it is the most restricted mode that YouTube has. I also acknowledge that some of the search images that Ms. Black provided to me were, were not appropriate for an educational setting. So I took it upon myself, Ms. Black mentioned that there were a few extensions that could do some of this work. But I've also engaged our filtering company, which is called Securely. And Securely currently has a tool that would allow parents to monitor their students' web browsing behavior on a mobile device and can additionally turn on and off different applications. So I think we met with Securely yesterday over the phone. And we're, we're pretty close to being able to put out a, a small alpha beta test of that application with some families to see if it's something that we might be able to use with the district.
Great, thank you, Kyle. Let's see, next speaker is Catherine Stewart. Do we have Catherine?
Oh, here I am. Hi.
Hi, go ahead.
Super. Okay, so basically, I just want to say is I don't want to go back to school and I don't want my kid to go back to school until after there's a vaccine because I don't want the responsibility of killing somebody else, whether it's a teacher, staff member, another student, or a family member that, that winds up getting it at home. And I don't care about the inconvenience. I think everybody complains about distance learning. Frankly, it's annoying, it's frustrating, stuff happens. However, it's not death. So as far as I'm concerned, I'm willing to be inconvenienced for a while longer until they come up with an effective vaccine so that people can be safe. And if it takes a longer amount of time, it takes however long it takes. And thank you again, Kyle, for trying to come up with methods to make it so that's easier for the parents to control what's going on with the kids. We do as much as we can of watching what they see on the screen. And I know the parents really do appreciate when you're trying to help them out with this. And I'll give the rest of my time to whoever else wants to talk. Thank you.
Thank you, Catherine. Next speaker, we have Michelle Gagliardi.
G, his last name starts with G?
Yeah, G A Y.
Yeah.
Do we have Michelle?
Okay, sorry, it's my first time speaking. I'm here.
Got it. Go ahead.
Okay, hi, I'm a parent of a kindergartner in an SDC class. First of all, I have to say that the distance learning is not going well for him or for me. I also have a ninth grader at Sequoia, also in special ed. So this has been very challenging. However, I value my sons, both my sons' health more. COVID is airborne. My son will not wear a mask and he cannot social distance because he does not understand what that means. How could his safety be ensured? You keeps, everybody keeps talking about vulnerable, bringing about back the vulnerable students. My definition of vulnerable seems to be different from the definition that's being discussed here because kids with disabilities have underlying health conditions, neurological conditions, respiratory issues. The thought of bringing them back into a classroom is not a good idea to me because, again, many of them can't wear masks, they can't social distance. I just don't, as hard as this has been, I don't think it's a safe choice. I think all this work you guys are trying to make to make this happen, it's not worth it. If somebody dies or gets sick, wait till February or March, when the flu season and the sick times are over. Or just, just say, just do distance the whole year. Because it just seems like this is so complicated and just not worth the potential risk to my family and any, any other family that, you know, that everyone's contact with. Thank you. And I do appreciate everything everybody's working on trying to make this work. But I don't think it's worth anyone getting hurt over. Thank you.
Thanks, Michelle. Next speaker, we have Mercedes Kwiatowski.
Hello?
I'm Mercedes.
Can anyone hear me?
Yes.
Hi, everyone. I just wanted to take a minute, I know it's late, to first say thank you to the board and to everyone involved with this planning and at least looking at what this would look like. As a lot of you know, I'm a psychiatrist in our community and our kids are really struggling. I've had kids talking about wanting to die. I've heard kids not being able to stay on their screens. They're struggling with their focus. They're missing their friends. And not to trivialize what it means to be coming back. But I do think we're at a point now where we've learned a lot more than we knew in July about how to keep people safe with this virus. We have the protocols in place. We have guidelines from the district. So I appreciate that we're looking at this and what it would look like to move back. I really like that we're doing it slowly and with a small pilot, just so we can start to see what's working and what doesn't. And most importantly to me, because our, our teachers are the crux of our schools, right? And they've been doing an incredible job in a very difficult situation. So I think that should be acknowledged. And I think they should be involved in the planning because if there are concerns they have or questions, I love that you're having them reach out to groups to have their concerns addressed and make sure they're part of the plannings, but they feel encouraged and about potentially coming back because that's what's going to lead to make this successful. And I'll just leave it at that. And I just wanted to say thank you, everyone, for being here.
Thank you, Mercedes. Next is Kristy Herrera.
I'm so sorry, that's my kids' school board meeting. I'm trying to. Okay, can you guys hear me?
Yes, go ahead, Kristy.
So I want to be honest by saying upfront that I've been blindsided by the emails we received yesterday from our union president and the district announcing that the board will be discussing this plan to return to school for possibly the end of October. What is the rush? Why are we discussing this when the board decided that we would not return any earlier than the end of the first trimester? I also remember the discussion at a board meeting where the concerns about the flu and cold season and the holidays and the likelihood of family gatherings meant that it was probably best to wait until after the new year. The Sequoia Union High School District isn't returning until January. How can we return any earlier? I know that some of the young ones are struggling remotely, but I also know that I personally feel successful at this point in time teaching targeted lessons that are focused and engaging. And returning to school would mean that I would be spending more time dealing with mask and distancing issues than actually teaching curriculum. And the possibility of moving students from their teachers who have already formed bonds and have worked so hard the last six weeks to build community will severely affect our students' emotional health and is not providing consistency and trust. This is not a good idea for our students or their teachers, as it would devastate me to lose my kindergarten students. There are reports from all over of schools and daycare centers where infections are on the rise. Why would it be any different here in Redwood City? I'm aware that a childcare program at one of our district schools has a pod with a positive COVID case, and now that entire group is quarantined. I understand the issue of confidentiality, but I feel that we, as employees, should be kept informed that this is happening. And I'm actually shocked that some of you would consider placing us in that same sort of situation. If this is happening in a small pod that supposedly is following proper protocols, what do you expect will happen when, if you return students and teachers to the classrooms? I teach kindergarten, and I have several of my students enrolled in a learning pod at the Boys and Girls Club. I'm seeing firsthand how challenging it is for the adults and children to navigate this new way of being in school. They aren't teaching lessons, but they're there to help the students get onto their Google meets and work on independent work. There's two adults in most classrooms with 10 students, and they're not able to, through no fault of their own, able to effectively manage these young kids. They're doing their best, but we cannot expect five and six-year-olds to wear their masks properly and maintain physical distance. I'm witnessing many students refusing to wear masks and wearing them improperly. Many students aren't independent enough to gather their materials, and they can't do their work without their instructor sitting right next to them. There's no way for them to be socially distanced between the students and teachers because they're constantly helping them adjust their masks, get their materials. And we would have one person in the classroom with 12 to 15 kids a day will be exposed to students, about 30 kids a day, and all the people that those kids are exposed to. The fact that this virus is airborne makes it not, not safe to be in our classrooms because they're not properly ventilated, and I would not feel safe teaching in the classroom. The rooms are older, and I don't feel that the heating and the air vents are sufficient. Parents are being given a choice whether or not to send their children to school based on their fear of contracting COVID-19. But why aren't teachers being given that same option? We want to teach. I want to be in the classroom. That isn't the issue. But the shuffling of staff and students would cause so much angst when we should be taking our mental health into consideration. So I urge you to reconsider the possibility of returning to campus in any capacity, even if the county remains in red for 14 days. I would much rather deal with the exhaustion of a heavier workload than risk being infected by going back face-to-face learning before we are ready to do so. Thank you.
Next, we have Sandy Hoover.
Exactly three minutes. No, I had exactly. I got cut off. I'm getting texts passing forward.
Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead, Sandy.
Thank you, Janet. Trustees, I have written you all a letter, and I hope that sometime in the next 24 hours, you'll have time and the opportunity to read it. Tonight, I'm going to speak about health and safety. And I'm going to begin with the fact that the integrative process only allows us, if we pass it, if our doctor's letters are accepted, only allows us to teach online or go on a leave and lose our pay and lose our home. So we either go back to work and risk, because I'm in a high-risk group, I risk getting sick and getting COVID and dying, or I lose my income and lose my home. That's where I'm starting. Because in TK and K, that classroom is full of nothing but bodily fluids. We've been doing it for decades. At this age, they have bathroom accidents and ginormous sneezes, and then there's the vomit. Teachers are the ones who help the students work through these issues. And we help them clean up the gunk on their faces and the clothes, and we help them zip up their pants, and we help them with the vomit, and we make them feel better because they're crying through this whole process. and we help them with the vomit, and we make them feel better because they're crying through this whole process. And during all of this process, there is no six-foot rule because they're, we're there to help them, and that's part of our social, emotional learning with them. We guide them through this process. So all of us in the TK and K classroom are at risk. And then the PPE we've been given isn't sufficient. The mask is too thin and flimsy. I sneeze through it, and the sneeze came through the mask. And we've got no sanitizers. The sanitizer we have drifts in and out of the main office building, and I've had to buy my own. I even bought disinfectants to wipe off the machines and the other equipment I use in the workroom because I never know where the hand sanitizer is going to be. And I just can't believe that you're going to have me make the choice that I'm going to go to work and maybe teach the class that I've developed a relationship with online, and we're really in our group, or you're going to let me teach a class online with a whole bunch of kids I don't know at all. Or I can go back and risk catching COVID and giving it to my three-month-old grandson. That's where I'm at, and that's why I'm so frustrated. And so I'm just going to end for now because I'm just completely upset about this whole process. It's, I'm just exasperated. So thank you for the opportunity to speak. I just want you to remember bodily fluids are ever prevalent in TK and K classrooms. Thank you very much, trustee.
See, next we have Carrie Yen, K E R I.
Hello?
Hi, Carrie. Go ahead.
Hi, thank you. Hello, Dr. Baker and the board trustees. Thank you for that presentation laying out all the work you have done to prepare campuses for on-campus learning. You've put a lot of thought in the details, and I'm glad that you will be serving the community. I am here today to support moving forward with on-campus learning for the younger children as soon as possible. I have three children, a third grader, a kindergartner, and a toddler. I'm particularly interested in supporting the return of younger students as I have a kindergartner at Roy Cloud that has an IEP for speech. These are informative and transformational years that provide foundations for children as they develop. And during this time, they learn these basic skills such as how to operate in a classroom, how to respect a teacher, how to respect each other, and starting, and start forming the concept of friendships. And the attention span of this age group is short, and it really interferes with the effectiveness of distance learning. Distance learning has its drawbacks. Doing classes on iPad is still inferior compared to experiencing class via laptop. We have a laptop that we can provide, but not everyone can have their child on a laptop. And not everyone can spend the extra time to explain things to their child. Now, everyone can help their child stay muted, and the teacher is forced to spend extra time muting noise, which distracts from the lesson. And some teachers have even threatened to remove children from the class if they cannot stay on mute. I tell them I experienced with distance learning because it helps to explain why I'm in support of returning to on-campus learning. My family is able to navigate the current distance learning curriculum relatively well, but we are supplementing with other resources, and not every family is able to do that. The current situation is only driving disparities between families from public education, or we strive to survive an even playing field. Some families have even dropped out of your schools, and they are finding other methods to educate their child, like sending them to a daycare that have expanded their programs to host in-person kindergarten classes. Some people are sending them to childcare centers where they have tutors helping kids with distance learning on our CSD campuses. And these are options that people have to pay additional money for, and not everyone is able to do this. Therefore, driving, further driving inequity. I understand and respect those families and teachers that want to continue with distance learning, and hope the district will figure out how to accommodate those needs. This is a trying time for all of us, but we all have our own circumstances and beliefs when it comes to dealing with COVID. And there is a contingency of families and teachers who do want to go back to school. My own kindergarten teacher wants to go back to school. So I think it's up to you to figure out how to accommodate everyone's wishes and do not have a one-size-fits-all model. There's already three kids that have dropped out of my son's class. That's nearly 10%. And I hope you really take a look at that. You know, we, we need to be flexible as a community, and I hope that you are flexible in considering all the options on the table.
Thank you, Carrie. Let's see, next we have Cameron Hoffman.
I didn't, I didn't catch that.
Cameron Hoffman, C A, yeah, C A M E R O N.
Yeah, hi, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Great. So we are, we're parents. We've got two children in district schools, and just wanted to speak up to say that we absolutely support teacher safety and in-person instruction for our neediest learners. As Dr. Baker talked about earlier, and Wendy did as well, you know, there has been a lot of work and preparation done to date, and that's great. I think the district should be doing as much as possible, plus some, to keep everyone safe. And, you know, families of the neediest kids who choose in-person learning should commit to safety. They should be expected to minimize any unnecessary exposures outside the classroom, keep kids home at the first sign of any symptoms, teach their kids to wear masks properly, and to understand and respect social distancing. You know, that's, that's, I think, the responsibility for the parents to do everything we can to keep our community safe. That said, we are not the first district to embark on the process of reopening focused on the neediest children. As mentioned earlier, many private schools and public schools in our neighboring towns, and even here in Redwood City, are, you know, weeks and in some cases, months into the process of solving these same concerns and finding a way to resume in-person learning. And again, I think that's great. We should learn from these other schools and these other districts, especially our neighboring San Mateo Public Elementary School districts and the Redwood City School Charter Schools that are reopening about the processes that they're undertaking to keep everyone safe. Are, you know, our community's most vulnerable students really need us to figure that out. I think we've all started to see the limits of distance learning, especially for, you know, the younger kids, the neediest kids. And I think we need to work together to find a way to address their education, their social, emotional needs. You know, they can't develop fine motor skills. Pre-K and TK can't develop fine motor skills and socialization online. Kindergarten kids can't master things like penciled grip, essential self-sufficiency skills. First graders can't distinguish reading phonics and working through early math mental blocks online. And special needs students can't get critical assessments and significant daily intervention online. It's just not working for those kids. As the Menlo Park School District said perfectly, in my opinion, for these most vulnerable students, the risks of staying home are greater than the risks of returning to school. So I support doing everything we possibly can, plus some, for our important, our cherished, our respected teachers. At the same time, we need to do more than the bare minimum for our most vulnerable students, and moving the dial even the small amount towards in-person learning that is currently being proposed would be very helpful so they're not left behind in their social, emotional, and educational development. As I think Alyssa said earlier, especially for these children, every day matters. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Allison Oldford.
Hey there.
Hi, Allison.
I'm a parent of a fourth grader and two first graders in our district. And like some others tonight, I'd like to speak in support of both teacher and student and staff safety and a return to in-person instruction. These two positions are not diabolically at odds. People assume that parents who want to see our kids return to the classroom must have little regard for teacher and staff well-being, and that's simply not the case. We want both. We want our teachers to feel valued and feel like they have a voice and a choice and feel safe. And we want our youngest and our neediest learners to get the in-person instruction they desperately need. So I'd also like to say that my kids have been in a group childcare setting since June that very closely follows state and county guidelines and right now mimics what school would look like if we returned. My first graders do their work in a classroom that's set up for social distancing. They wear their masks indoors at all times, and they're happy, and everyone has stayed, everyone has stayed healthy. So we hear a lot about the worst-case scenarios and the fear, but there are success stories, too. I love our teachers. I applaud the heroic effort they're putting in, and I hear their concerns. And I also want them to know that this can be done well and safely with the proper support from our district. So I appreciate the efforts that are being put in to communicate tonight about all of the steps you're putting into place to begin this process and to move it forward. And just another one of those parents adding full support. So, thank you.
Thanks, Allison. Next is Brian Crawford.
Oh, thank you. Do you mind resetting the timer? So thank you to the board, and especially to the teachers. It's just been such a heroic effort. And, and also I appreciate the predicament the teachers are in. I have three kids in Redwood City School District, two working parents at home. And everybody's struggling with distance learning, but as many have mentioned, it's our youngest who are suffering the most. So I'm thinking in particular of one of my two boys, who has always loved school. He's so focused, engaged. He's always been happy and helpful in the classroom. But this year, he's turned sullen and angry and withdrawn. The other night at dinner, we played the game that many of you probably played called Rose, Thorn, and Bud. And, you know, we asked him, you know, tell me something good about the day and something bad, and he had a lot to say in the Thorn category. But when we pushed him, he didn't have anything in the Rose category about his day at school. So we said, okay, I know this has been difficult, but what about the future? What about something to look forward to? What about your Bud? And again, he was silent. And we pushed him. He finally said, okay, I guess I'm looking forward to being Dad. And I know this is a flippant comment, and he's not really suicidal. But I think it sums up the situation that many of our kids feel in the mental health crisis that we're facing. So I'm another parent that I recognize the predicament that many of us are in. But I don't think we can wait until November or next year. So I urge the board to, to continue to be proactive and working with the teachers so that they feel safe and have the equipment and information they need to return to campus. And please don't wait, because I, I also think that the risk to our kids' mental health and academic well-being and the chance they might be setting the foundation for growing up hating school at such an early age, I think it's too great a risk to bear. Thank you.
Thanks, Brian. Janelle Allen.
You have you? Hello?
Brian, you're not, oh, there you go. You're muted now. So we have Janelle Allen.
Hi.
Hi, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. I'm a parent of a kindergartner at Roy Cloud. I understand that distance learning is hard for everybody, but it really is the best way to keep our families and the teachers safe. As someone who is immunocompromised, we cannot send our daughter back to school. And we are feeling a lot of pressure with this whole plan to bring kids back at the end of October. And I would really urge the board to not do that. Wait until the flu season is done. Like the teachers have said, kindergartners are a very vulnerable group. If you put them in there, they are not going to keep masks on. They will not distance. They will not get this before COVID education everyone's dreaming of. The best thing is to be online where kids can wear masks and be safe and hear their teacher and maintain the cohorts they're already in because they have developed relationships with their teachers. And to pull them out of that in a couple of weeks is going to do them way more harm than keeping things how it is now. I yield the rest of my time.
Thanks, Janelle. Next is Indra Hernandez.
Maybe more voices of people speaking.
See.
Indra, if you're here, can you raise your hand so we can see you? We can move on, and if we find it, we'll come back. Jennifer Wenzel. You have Jennifer?
Yeah, I just unmuted.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Hi, so, um, hello, everybody. I am a Rhode City school teacher. I have been teaching at Rhode City School District for over 13 years, and I care deeply for all of the students, families, staff, and teachers. I also am a mother of a three-year-old. After hearing the news of this board meeting yesterday, I felt an uncomfortable, nonstop feeling of worry all over again. I cannot shake the overwhelming concerns I have about returning to school and facing the possibility of bringing this virus home to my family. According to the American Academy of Pediatrics, over 580,000 children have tested positive for COVID. Children can also be carriers who can spread it to their families, friends, and teachers. In fact, recent information has shown that children have a higher viral load, which means that if they have the virus, even if they have no symptoms, they are even more contagious than adults. This is especially scary if children are not wearing their masks correctly. If we are, if we, if we open up our schools with the current level of community spread, even in a hybrid model, there is a high likelihood that someone in our school will get COVID since Redwood City has the highest COVID incident rate in San Mateo County. Even a single child, parent, teacher, staff member, or loved one is too high of a price to pay when it could be prevented with continuing distance learning. I understand the feeling of wishing for a sense of normalcy, but we cannot just wish away this virus. We need to do the right thing and keep people safe. We are also heading into flu season, which can lead people to dismiss symptoms or come to school too, or too soon mistakenly thinking that they had the flu. Please do not camp with lives. Please keep us home safe. Thank you for listening to me and hearing my concerns.
Thank you, Jennifer. Let's see, we have, next is Jeanette Serrano.
Hello?
Hi, go ahead.
Board members, I'm Jeanette. I'm a kindergarten teacher for 34 years now in Redwood City and a few years outside of the district. Like the board and parents in our district, we teachers have taken to heart the impact of distance learning on the education of our children in Redwood City. And we've been working to exhaustion to learn how to provide the best instruction possible. We are well aware of the challenges with engagement and the problems that some families are facing. But I am proud of myself and my colleagues for the tremendous amount of time and dedication devoted to provide support to the parents as needed and to provide the best possible instruction during distance learning. This being said, I was alarmed to see that the discussion of considering bringing back TK to first-grade students to the classrooms is on the agenda tonight. Yes, I teach a group identified as particularly vulnerable because of their age, because they belong to an underserved community, and because they are second-language learners. I'm surprised that we teachers, particularly those on the Bayside, have not been identified as also being particularly vulnerable to a higher risk of exposure to COVID. I'm alarmed and don't understand how the district is considering bringing back our TK1 students when even if our county has moved from purple, which is widespread, to red, which is substantial. Substantial does not sound safe. Sounds frightening to me. I've witnessed at the daycare situation online and in person because I've walked over to see students who are having trouble keeping their masks on. Kindergartners, historically in 30 years, there's going to be one or two who are going to be under tables who don't want to follow directions, who are going to defiantly. who don't want to follow directions, who are going to defiantly not keep their masks on. I feel, I feel for those parents who are having trouble with their parents, but please think of the health of your, of the staff as well. There are certain things that are not going to improve by bringing the students in. Pencil grip, we're not going to be able to help those students. I thank Alyssa for talking about the variations in San Mateo. Redwood City is particularly vulnerable, especially some of our schools. Not all our schools have the same needs. Some schools may be able to open up, but some, it's going to be much more dangerous. And I've already contacted my doctor to see if I can be excused and have some sort of waiver.
Thank you, Jeanette. Sarah Latoura?
Hello?
Hi, Sarah, go ahead.
Other speaker, I don't see the timer. It just is red, with zero zero.
Start it when you get going.
Okay, thanks. If we are returning to the classroom, as a parent, I would prefer option one, the cohort A B with cleaning in between sessions. There are two main reasons for this. Currently, the hardest day for my family is Wednesdays, these asynchronous learning day. Having three days of ALD would be very difficult to accommodate for parents. Option one would be an easier option to implement for teachers. Some of our teachers are working 12 to 15 hours a day. And with option two, that would require them to not only teach to students for full days, and they'd also have to come up with work for the other three days. My next comment is, do we have the funding to play for cleaning in between sessions? Will this come from CARES funds? I am concerned that our district doesn't really have budget to support the type of cleaning that would need to take place so that students can come in for two sessions every day during a week. I'm also concerned with the possibility of surges that are likely to happen. Perhaps we will have a waiver that allows for continued in-person instruction, regardless of the phase our county is in. But I, and I hope that there's a plan that triggers the switch back to distance learning if there becomes a situation where there's too many cases in our county. For example, East Palo Alto currently is at 14% infection rate compared to the rest of the county, which is, I believe, around 4%. So it's a much lower rate of infection. That is very disconcerting because that could happen to Redwood City. I want to end by applauding the excellent teaching I am seeing at Clifford Elementary School. The staff are phenomenal, and I personally am delighted at the learning I see occurring in both my students' classrooms. Congratulations to Jude and Tiffany on their excellent leadership during this difficult time. Keep up the good work, Clifford community. And I'll just end there and say, good luck with your plans. I know this is a very difficult time for everybody. Thank you.
Thanks, Sarah. Our next speaker is Carla Salome. And Kyle, I don't see her on the list. So Carla, if you are here, can you raise your hand so Kyle can find you? And if not, we have Susan Forker.
Hey, can you hear me?
Hi, Susan, go ahead.
Hey, my name is Susan Forker. I'm a parent to a first grader and a second grader, Adalante Selby. This just came up tonight, as far as I know, but I wanted to take this chance to speak out as strongly opposed to moving students outside of language immersion programs, if there is this potential gradual return to school. With Wendy's final comments tonight on the topic, I know you guys recognize the concerns. And I hope this is not something that comes into play. That said, I encourage you to consider a separate survey for dual immersion program families with information regarding whether we may temporarily lose the immersion program with the return to school. Ask parents if they would prefer to continue at-home learning in dual immersion, or if returning to school in any capacity, even without that program would be their preference. I think this is a really important distinction. Our young students have worked hard and are accustomed to learning in a dual-language setting. If we merge to non-immersion programs this year, even just for a little while, we'll lose a significant amount of the language acquisition that they've gained so far. And in addition, our students would be behind other students in their grade in an English-only setting. This is an expected aspect of the dual immersion program because our students are learning an additional language on top of the regular academic schedule. But it would be a blow to students and families if they're suddenly put in English-only classrooms and feel like they're behind. Families in these programs need to be explicitly informed of the possibility of losing the language immersion program and given this information prior to completing a survey about their feelings on returning to school. And I'll yield the rest of my time. That's all I've got. Thank you.
Eric Sutton.
There we go. Hello? Sorry for the delay there. Yeah, I'm really surprised that we're having this discussion. And I think that a lot of you probably know me from past comments, so I'm not going to say what you think that I'm going to say. Not going to speak out in opposition to returning to school. I'm just going to speak on behalf of our six-year-old kid. He, he's in first grade. He's tried very hard to make the best of this year, and he's doing great. He, he does need help, and my wife and I both work. And we, we are there occasionally when he needs help, but he also works through a lot of the issues himself. And against all odds, he's just doing great in school. And, and he's really loving school, and he, he's learning a lot. And the, the current proposal that's out there is going to rip him away from his classroom and his teacher potentially mid-semester. And that, that's insane, because you've got some kids who are trying, and teachers, who are trying so hard to make this work really, really well. And they're doing an amazing job, like the kids and the teachers. And actually, his entire classroom is doing a great job. We can hear, we can hear all the students participating, and the, the, the speed that they're learning how to read is amazing, and there's accountability, and there's positive vibes going all around. And kudos to Teacher Conti. She's a great teacher. But, you know, we, we have that going on right now. And then what you're asking is, you're saying, okay, let's just interrupt this, this thing that's, that we've tried so hard to make work, and let's just throw a wrench in it. And so for everybody who's trying to make the best of this scenario, it really sucks because it, for the kids, it means they're going to have to get, you know, a new environment, all the stuff that they, all the work that they've shown that they're, they're making progress and have proved themselves to their teachers and their classmates. That's all out the window. They have a new group. And it, it really sucks. I moved nine times when I was a kid. It really sucks to have to prove all over again, you know, exactly what it is that you know, what it is that you need help on. And to get to know a new group and, and to align the needs of the students. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Eric, and thank you to all of our speakers tonight. That brings us to the end of our public comments. So with that, are there any other comments from the board or Dr. Baker? Do we have Dr. Baker? Did we lose him?
Janet, he's having difficulties. He got kicked off one more time, so he's returning.
Okay. So I guess that brings us to the end of our discussion item. We have Dr. Baker back, so I see we have Dennis, Alisa.
Now you know how our students feel, John.
Yeah, exactly, exactly. And this has all been upgraded.
All right, so that was the end of the public comments. I don't know. I, I couldn't see when you dropped off, so I said we were going to move on from that discussion item unless you had something more.
No, it's just, I'm sorry.
John, do you have Comcast?
Yes, it is Comcast.
Okay, because they've had issues through Santa Clara Valley most of the day today, and up and through the peninsula. It's been, it hasn't been bad on the peninsula, but I know there have been outages in Comcast's various system today.
I, I was told earlier that it was up here in San Francisco also, but I thought by the time I came home, it was from the office. It was cleared up. Evidently not.
Comcast was out in Redwood City yesterday also.
Okay.
So were you done with that item, Dr. Baker?
Yes, yes, and, and, yeah.
Which also includes items 16-1, 16-2, and 16-3.
So moved.
Is that Alisa?
Second.
Alisa and Maria, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Jessica McBride?
Hi.
Hi.
Justice D. Silco?
Hi.
Vice President McAvoy?
Hi.
President Lawson?
Hi. Thank you. So 16-4, discussion on board policy on distance teaching and learning.
Thank you very much. So the, I'm bringing this board policy back to you for the second time. I want to thank Alisa and Janet for meeting recently regarding this topic. In late July, I believe it was July 29th, the board approved this particular board policy on distance teaching and learning. And when the year started, we were learning from other districts that there were concerns, and our teachers voiced this as well through the union leadership, that there was concern that parents and/or students might be taking pictures or videos of these online synchronous, usually synchronous or asynchronous, it could happen, settings. And so we researched that a little bit further, reached out to our attorney also to find out more information, because the concern was actually enforcement. So we can have a board policy that states, we don't want you to do that. We don't want you to take pictures or videotape or what have you. But how would we enforce it? And that was something that Alisa, Janet, and I were speaking with about as well in our committee meeting. And so after consultation, it was determined that the best course of action was to bring this forward to the board for consideration as an update to the board policy, but also to amend the acceptable use policy to include language in there about the appropriate nature of it and how it's not allowed, that students and parents sign at the beginning, and staff sign at the beginning of the year. And so that would need to be updated moving forward, of course, for this school year as it pertains. So that is the updated information in the school board policy that is being presented tonight. Are there any questions?
I had Dennis.
Yeah, actually, you kind of touched on it. I know, nowhere in there did I find out what's the consequence. And I'm not even sure how you would even know that, other than like, you had an example today where apparently a parent posted something on YouTube. But if I record it or I, you know, take pictures, whatever, how are you ever going to know? And if I do it, who's in trouble? The parent, the student, and what's going to happen to whoever you have an issue with?
So there would need to be a discussion with the parent, of course, and a review of the tech policy and the, and the board policy. If it's a student, then there are consequences already in the acceptable use agreement regarding the use of technology, social media, et cetera, in using a district device and district Wi-Fi when we're in person or in a childcare setting in which they're accessing things. So those would be the consequences that would be laid out for the student. I have to be honest with you. I don't have specific cases that have occurred, certainly not locally. We have had students that have tried various things and consequences entailed. But in regards to a parent, that would be a different level.
So what's the, I mean, I understand the use agreement that the student signed, but what's the parent signing? You said they're signing a use agreement, but what's?
You're right. There's a notification at the beginning of the year regarding, you know, a parent, so the parent also signs the acceptable use agreement on behalf of, you know, the student signs it and the parent signs it as well as one of the beginning-of-the-year documents and registration, part of the registration packet. So that would be what would be included, although we'd have to do an update soon because this would be new information. So it would be a notification out to students and parents that there was a change in the acceptable use agreement.
And then you have to go get it re-signed by everybody, right?
Well, that would be preferable, yes. I have to be, but, you know, we are in a new setting, and we probably wouldn't have thought about this board policy as such unless we started this. And I appreciate, you know, I did get a recent notification of a student that took a picture and posted it on Snapchat. And luckily, it wasn't inappropriate. It was more silly in nature, but I can see how ideas might be forthcoming.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions from the board? Okay, if not, is there a motion to approve? Cecilia?
A second.
You were muted. Do you want a second? Okay. Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Jessica McBride?
Hi.
Justice Marcus?
Hi.
Justice D. Silco?
Hi.
Vice President McAvoy?
Hi.
President Lawson?
Hi. Okay, moving on to 17-1, report from board members and superintendent. Who would like to go first? Alisa, you're unmuted, so do you want to go ahead?
Okay, unless somebody else wants to go. Let's see. Uh, just trying to think, some of these things we've already talked about tonight. I did want to mention that we had a San Mateo County School Boards Association retreat, I think, two Saturdays ago. And, you know, Dana's the new president, and I think she's doing a really good job. She's sending out those weekly communications, which has been a great addition this year. And I know all the school board members, and I think, I don't know if superintendents get those or not. But hopefully you found those useful. I did want to mention that, you know, the Kent Award did not happen in May. And so they're going to do a virtual Kent reception on Friday, October 23rd, 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. And more information will come out on that. I don't, I don't think that's been announced yet. And then we talked about moving. We'll have the, just now, instead of every week with Nancy McGee, it'll be the second Tuesday of the month with Nancy McGee and the school board members. And then we'll probably add in some additional Tuesdays and Monday nights. But we're trying not to overload everybody right now because there's so much going on. And then, um, oh, we had a San Mateo County School Boards Association in conjunction with the San Mateo County Office of Ed. We did a new prospective board orientation for candidates who are running for school board in San Mateo County. And it was actually very well attended. I think it was the first time we had done a joint thing like that. So I talked about CSBA and the resources there and really encouraged everybody to take the Masters in Governance training and things like that. So I think that was really good just to kind of prep. And we have a lot of people, new people running in the, in the county, so it's and let's see, Dennis and I have had, actually, and Dr. Baker, we've had a number of meetings on that workforce housing project. And Dr. Baker did a great job presenting on Monday night at the city council meeting. And we'll hear more in October as to whether or not that'll be moving forward. And then I've attended the superintendent advisory committee and the coffee with Clifford, and then all the county calls, which, you know, are pretty interesting just in terms of everything going on. So that's it.
Alisa, what was the date for the Kent Awards?
Yeah, it's October 20, it's Friday, October 23rd, 4:00 to 6:00.
Okay, thank you.
And I know we have at least one candidate. I saw Redwood City on the list. I don't remember which program.
The Newcomer Academy at Kennedy.
Oh, that's what it was. Yeah, thank you. Oh, that's what it was. Yeah, thank you. One, one year kind of blends into another. I did do a Kent review site visit for Jefferson Union, which was really nice. Okay, that's it.
Thanks. Who would like to go next?
I'll go next.
Go ahead.
My only report was, I also attended the superintendent and advisory committee.
Thank you. Maria or Dennis?
Yeah, I, Alisa already covered mine, so I don't have any additional.
Same for me.
And then, so I don't know if Alisa mentioned it, we did have the LCP steering committee. And then this week, I was at the climate committee meeting with the union that John and Wendy were at, and I thought we had a really, really good conversation with them. I thought that went really well. And then this morning, we had our first coffee with the superintendent, and that was with Clifford, and I thought they had a pretty good turnout, so that was great. Dr. Baker, do you have anything? He's, he's muted, you're muted, but I'm seeing no.
It's all been mentioned. It's already been mentioned by other board members.
Okay, so we can move on to 18-1, information on San Mateo County Investment Fund. Any questions on that or comments? Then from Dennis. Okay, thank you. Correspondence?
Lots of emails. Right.
Yep, a lot of emails. Other business suggested items for the future agenda. Dennis?
Yeah, I, I'm comfortable with the response on web security and students. So I, I think we should have Kyle make a presentation. I'm a little nervous that we're, that we could potentially allow things to get through, and we're going to rely on parents to review something versus us being more proactive and just not letting even get there. So I'd like to understand, is there more? Is it a technological limit, or is it a cost issue? Or there, there is no way to do more than we're doing, because it's just not clear to me.
You know, Dennis, I totally agree with that, so I would like that to be on the agenda. And I noticed, at least, we had one teacher talk about something that she's doing, like, you know, paying $5 to then kind of copy it over, so they don't have full access, but they have access to that URL. Anyway, I think there may be some other, other things to do, but I totally agree with you, like internet safety has got to be top of mind for us.
Any other items? Okay, so that brings us to changes to the board agenda schedule.
I don't believe there are any at this point in time.
Eliana?
So, so we're, we had a whole bunch of things that were supposed to be tonight that weren't. So are those going to get re-slotted at some point?
Yes, they will be. They will be, Dennis. And then, don't forget that at our next meeting, we also have, the business will be reporting out. Priscilla and her, Priscilla will be reporting out at the next board meeting.
Okay, so, and then our next board meeting is a special meeting that we added for the LCP adoption. We have that scheduled for 6:00.
For 6:00, and then we also have Priscilla that's also presenting at that board meeting.
I think that there were just a few changes to the agenda. I know that there was some confusion about changes, so I think that's what Dennis is talking about, but.
I have to go back and look. I don't have it with me in front.
Yeah, yeah, but I think that there were some things I forgot to mention the last time, John, when the topic came up.
Okay, okay. I meet with Dan, well, we'll talk, I'll get ahold of Dennis, because I do meet with him this week, so he and Maria, so I will make note of it.
Okay, that brings us to the end of our agenda. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Maria? Was that Cecilia?
Yes.
Okay, all those in favor? I.
Hi.
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 All right.